So it is Tuesday, June 3, 2025, 6:00 PM. I will call this regular meeting of the Berry City Council to order. Council or manager, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Could we move 4G off consent for discussion?
Of course.
Thank you.
This is 4G.
Yep.
So we'll move that down. Where would you like to place that?
Whatever's good for you.
Okay. How about if we do that, put that at 8C? Is that all right?
That works for me.
Any objection from the council?
No.
Yes.
I have a question about 4E, the cure, and I just wanted some clarification. So can we pull that out, just so I can get some clarification on it?
We could. A ton of questions?
No, no, no. I just, I'm trying to understand.
Okay, because we can discuss it before we do the consent agenda.
Okay, then that's fine.
Okay. Yeah, we can discuss that on the consent agenda. Yes.
I have something that I don't know whether it will add to the agenda or not, but maybe it's just a new councillor question.
Right, but where is he putting these?
But I understand that this is the period that...
Hey, gavel you down there. Thank you. I'm sorry.
I understand this is the period for revisions and alterations to the ordinance, the civil conduct ordinance, which is coming up next time.
On the 17th.
On the 17th, for the second vote and so forth. And I'm wondering what the mechanism for councillors to offer feedback before the revision is finished or drafted, what's the mechanism for us to offer feedback and make sure that our concerns and the concerns that are raised by our constituents are at least considered?
Well, you can always, I mean, my preference, you can always offer feedback to the manager or to fellow councillors. You can do that through email. Personally, I prefer that we don't do that, because if you've probably already seen on occasion, there'd be an email that, you know, folks will shoot across, and we're all very careful not to respond, because if you hit "respond to all," technically, you're having a meeting. So I've always preferred that the discussion occur in the council chambers when we're discussing the subject matter, but if you'd like to make, if you'd like to share something, as you have, with the entire council, that's absolutely appropriate by email.
Can we add a place to put it, for me to just make a few of the suggestions that I want to make?
Oh, absolutely.
In this meeting tonight.
Yeah, but we would likely do that during the meeting, if that's okay.
You mean, next week, or next time?
Next time, on the 17th.
The difficulty that I have with that is that then we're in the position of looking at something that's already drafted and complete, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not a legal scholar, I can't, I don't know, you know, and I don't have the same kind of level of experience that the city manager and the police chief and, you know, the people who are going to have to enforce this have. So I'd kind of like to have this, I'd like to have a back-and-forth conversation about this before the decision and the draft is done, just because otherwise, it's very easy to say, "Well, this will slow down the process, and we really need this to happen before summer." And so, thank you for sharing this, but we're not going to consider it.
Sure. I mean, and we can always vote to have it read a second, you know, once you have the first hearing. We don't, we could table it. So there's lots of things that could happen, but the problem with what you're talking about, that's why we have meetings. That's why we warn them, so that, you know, so that it's not just the council on an email chain, or just the council having a discussion.
Okay.
The general public is warned that we're going to be discussing these matters. So, you know, there's plenty of mechanisms for the council. They could simply table it, and they could say, "Okay, we're not going to take a vote on this at the meeting on the 17th. We're going to wait for another meeting, so people can think and reflect about the information that's being presented." What I'd suggest is that you get that to the manager well in advance of the meeting on the 17th, so that we could all have a chance to consider it. And I've told the manager, our attorneys sometimes get very busy, but I would appreciate it if we get the information on the ordinance sooner rather than later from our attorneys, and I think they've heard that message loud and clear.
Okay.
So as soon as...
I will write something up and...
Is that okay? Does that work?
Not really, but I'll, if it's what you do, then it's what we do.
Well, procedurally, it's the best we can do.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that, you know, my preference would be for, you know, a sit-down with, it could be good-warn-it, a sit-down with the stakeholders and a sort of one more discussion before we actually vote, because I'm, you know, I think, you know, judging from the vote last time to move it forward, there are a lot of people who are very determined to have this ordinance. There were a lot of people who spoke, who were very determined to alter it...
I have this ordinance.
Or alter it, you know, to consider some alterations to it. So, you know, having, I'm uncomfortable, I'll be on record saying, I'm uncomfortable having the second reading and the vote be the same meeting with, when I'm, I'm not sure that that will give enough time for the, you know, maybe complicated suggestions that people have to be considered, and, you know, not everyone is prepared to draft an amendment in, you know, Robert's Rules of Order language for us to vote up or down.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I'm wondering, my experience with, you know, first readings for policies and that kind of thing has been that the first reading happens, and as long as there's not any substantive changes, it goes to second reading, but it seems like we haven't seen the ordinance, so we don't know if there will be substantive changes or not. And I think that, too, what councillor Hillgarten is saying is that...
We're not slowing the process down. The process is the process. Sometimes you're on the right side of a 4-3 vote, sometimes you're not. But if the council wants to table it or allow additional time, we'll do that.
But you interrupted me.
Well, I know, but technically, you're both sort of out of order, because I've given a lot of time to this discussion, and that's not what's on the agenda.
But this is adjustments to the agenda, and we're, and the council was suggesting and adding a discussion about the ordinance.
Okay. We'll do that under item 8G.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else under changes to the agenda? Nothing? Okay. Then we'll move on to visitors and communications. Anyone wishing to address the council regarding an item that is not on the agenda? Jo Ellen? Oh, you're muted, Jo Ellen. You gotta unmute yourself. There you go. You're good.
For a change, I'm muted, eh? I'm Jo Ellen of Annieville Pleasant, on Pleasant Street in Berry. So there are some newly-elected council members, and I look forward to getting to know you. The way we get to know you is by how you discuss and vote on matters that come before you. We also observe how you treat each other when you disagree, and how you treat us when we petition you. I'm glad to see that the council is focusing on the beloved community. We also, on quality of life issues that concern not just our community, but every community. During this time of self-examination, it would be helpful for us to recognize the bias toward the business community currently reflected in the uneven response to residents' needs. There are ordinances in place that are not enforced that would make our streets safer, speeding on Merchant Street and the Beltway, for example. We discussed the city's noise pollution and the limits of the ordinance, which makes it difficult to regulate train horn blare, for example. There have been discussions about improving the abandoned and blighted buildings ordinance to avoid having to bail out errant landlords. In this next period of the council's work, I challenge you to face us, the residents, with discussions about serving residents' needs and decisions that support measures to not only improve community safety, but make us feel beloved. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Bern Rose?
Hi, Bern Rose. I left a few more of the tick booklets that came in this week from the states, and if anyone wants them, they're easy to obtain, or you can just ask me for more, so please pass those along. Thank you for this time. I'm offering some thoughts I hope you will find useful as we move ahead in discussing how to deal with problems we have in the city.
Excuse me, Bern, can you talk into the microphone? I'm having a little hard time.
Or is that not enough?
Thank you.
Is that better? "I'm offering some thoughts I hope you will find useful as we move ahead in discussing how to deal with problems we have in the city. I will address behaviors of drivers who endanger us all at another time. I appreciate the work you do and the work of Chief Vale and the Police Department. It feels important to me to acknowledge the training our emergency services receive and the oversight they have. They do a good job. Using another community's rejected or city ordinance for behaviors may have been a start, but I hope we can do a better job with it. Use the equity assessment tool we have and have community discussions, not to complain, but to problem-solve. From what I heard Chief Vale report, our city is low on serious crime and high on quality of life disturbances. Some of the unhoused people who frequent the park have similar concerns for their own well-being. One reason, they stay in the park where there is visibility and some degree of personal safety. Few ideas I offer in a kind and contributing way, not as a challenge. Give folks a place to smoke in the park, a small corner at one end where they can feel safe. Let it be a trial period, and if it is kept clean of butts and trash, allow it to continue. Could we use reparative or restorative justice dealing with things the ordinance addresses? It would include community dialogue, restitution, community service, allowing for deeper understanding of the impact of crime, and promoting reconciliation within the community. Could we, instead of giving citations, give points like on your license, the ways to redeem points through community service and care? For example, cleanup duty around the park and helping repair damages made. If not, then lose the privilege to use the public space. Understand more deeply the needs of the few who are struggling to be in community, and see if we can assist those folks to have their needs met. Engage folks in monitoring what they see. Report drug selling. How to protect people who are doing that reporting. I think we have a lot of people that don't like what's going on, and they might not understand or be able to be a part of the system of, how do we stop that? And unhoused, all unhoused folks are not drug users, but drug sellers need to get out of our community. We don't want them. Citations and fines aren't the same as requiring community service or leaving the community, but requiring folks with hurtful or destructive behaviors to participate in restoration and support for changing those behaviors. I hope that we can all benefit from working together to solve problems that are everywhere in our culture. And I found it helpful to use some information on a website called library.fiveable.me/key-terms-introduction-law-legal-process. And I'll send that to Cheryl, that link, so she has it. So thank you very much for your time. I hope that we can continue to work on this, because it is a serious concern in our community.
Thank you, Bern.
Thank you.
Anyone else under visitors and communications? Okay, council, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We'll have the approval of the minutes of 5:20, 25. There are no other additional licenses and permits, other than what you'll see under Liquor Control Board. We have volunteer appointments. There were four that had the support of the chair, Rick Denti, Brett Gagne, Sue Higby, and John Balsin-Jacomo, all being reappointed to the Buildings and Facilities Committee, and again, they have been endorsed by the chair. We will approve the Civic Center Fund Use Policy. We will approve Resolution 2025-10, Cure the Air in the Annual Meeting Warning and Ballot. We will approve our city attorneys to conduct the city's tax sales for the year 2025, 2026. We've moved the changes to the cemetery regulations. We'll discuss that at a later time. And manager does not have any contracts, so a motion to approve would be in order. And I know councillor Spalding, you had questions.
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded.
Yes.
And yes.
I actually have a couple of things on the minutes, so if we could start there. Under 8B, on the third line, it says, "The following materials are the basis for the infrastructure work the city is proposing," and I think maybe it should just say, "The materials in the packet are the basis for the infrastructure work," because I think that was probably just a cut and paste. Under attendees, under C, Ginger Cloud, does not spell her name with an E at the end, and Tom, it's not Tom Tracy, it's Tom Treese, and that's T-R-E-E-C-E. And then Rich McSheffrey, I think, does not have an A. I think it's just M-C-S. And then there's a spelling error under, on page, under D, Flood Resiliency Plan, on page, I can't tell which page is the right page number, eight, nine? It says acknowledging, it's in the parentheses after C, click fix, it says acknowledging that during emergencies, it should be IES instead of Y apostrophe S. And then under nine...
Were we talking the last meeting, or this one here? The last?
This is the minutes.
Of last, the last one, or this one?
Last one.
The last one?
The last meeting. And then under number nine, it says, "Mayor Lozan will be pursuing the legislature," and I'm not sure what that means, so maybe that could be clarified, please, with different language. Will be...
Petition?
That might be a better word. Yes. Thank you. Those are my questions, or my suggestions for the minutes. And then my question about, I have a question about the Civic Center Improvement Fund policy. Could someone explain to me, the policy says that the fund shall not be used, under number four, says the fund shall not be used for operational expenses, e.g., salaries, utilities, provided that the salary of the Civic Center Marketing Director shall be considered in authorized use, which seems a little odd that we're saying we're not going to include salaries except for this one salary. So it just seems like a weird thing to put in prohibited use.
Oh, I can, is that, there more on that one?
I have more.
Okay.
And then the other thing on that one is, I'm trying to understand, under number six, oversight and reporting, it says, "Requests for use of the fund in excess of $5,000 must be submitted in writing to the city manager, or their designate and include a detailed scope, budget, and justification." And I'm wondering, who's requesting that? Is that by the committee? Because it seems like some of the confusion was who gets, who's in charge of that fund? And it also says in that third bullet that the Buildings and Facilities Committee or its successor shall be notified of expenditures in excess of $5,000 made from the fund. So I think that what this number six is trying to do is provide, to make sure everyone's in the communication loop, and I just, it's a little confusing, and so I'm just trying to understand that. And my last question is, under oversight and reporting, it says, "Audits or reviews may be conducted." Is this fund included in the audit, in our audit?
Yes. I believe so. Yes, thank you.
It's all part of the city fund, so it would be included in our single audit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So do you want me to stop, and then you could answer?
Yeah, I'll answer those, and if those are, those are just the ones on the policy, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. So for the first question, we, the city has had on, has paid Jim McWilliam as a marketing director for the Civic Center. He organizes events. He's been, he's been responsible getting the dasher boards, the, all the advertisements in the, in the BOR and the auditorium. He's never been paid out of the general fund. He was the idea, and I wasn't here for it, but, and I know councillor Bergeron was probably here around for the beginning of it. Essentially, he was hired to fill the space with advertisements, and the idea was that those advertisements would pay for his salary, so that we didn't have to dip into the general fund, and this basically just, basically grandfather's that clause in, so that it doesn't become a general fund expense. It's basically paying out of its own revenue that he's generating for the building. The other piece on the request for excess of $5,000, we intentionally kept it general, because the requests don't have to come from the committee. For example, last year, the request for the, for the turf came from several organizations, including BYSA. So in an effort to, you know, if BYSA were to approach us, or for example, the Black Bears were to approach us for, you know, some improvements, which I know they're contemplating things, for example, like the, the board separators that a lot of rinks have for the younger kids, that could be a request to the Civic Center Fund that wouldn't come from the committee. So we kept it intentionally general on that line. The third bullet was basically, you know, a token to understand that they are an advisory committee of the Hill, and we, of the Civic Center Hill, and so we want to keep them informed of these expenses. This was, you know, so they're aware of improvements the city is making in excess of those $5,000 to the facilities.
Okay. That's helpful. Okay. I'll move on to the last question I have for consent agenda, which is regarding the resolution. So can someone explain to me what happened? Because this resolution doesn't explain it to me. It's very confusing.
Sure. I can start, and then the clerk, Mativia, can fill in the gaps. So the councillor Spalding, if you recall, when we started discussing the potential charter change on the fund balance, we had sort of brainstormed a couple of different ideas, and I think the one where we had initially settled was the one month's allocation of expenses, which, you know, to some people might, you know, might resonate more than a percentage change, because many people in their own personal lives might, might do that. So that's how we had described the change as it had started to go through the charter change hearing process. At one of the, at the first charter change hearing, charter change hearing, that proposal was changed from going to one month, from one month's allotment of expenses to 10%, because it, you know, through discussion, it just became clear that that was going to be a better proposal. We changed the language in the text of the amendment to the charter. What didn't get changed was the, the heading that describes the charter change, right? So when you go to vote, it'll say, and this was Article 5, I believe, Article 5. So it says, Article 5, "Shall the Berry City Charter be amended to change the amount of fund balance retention from 5% to blank," right? And that section said one month's expenses. The text of the charter change, which we show below, was correct, that it showed the 10%, which is what the council had settled on.
So they didn't match?
It didn't match.
Okay.
So the, what the language the voters voted on was correct. What wasn't correct, a correct descriptor, was the heading, the, the heading of the article. The, I flagged this for the city attorney. They have indicated that they can be cured, like, simple changes like that can be cured through a resolution, and we're going to try to get, you know, some clarity from legislative council. Of course, the legislature has to ratify all our changes, so we're going to try to get some clarity to make sure that, that this is sufficient to cure that error.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Clerk Mativia, I don't think there's anything further.
You summed it up very well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I just, I couldn't understand what, what had happened, so that makes sense. Thank you so much.
Of course. Any other questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none. There's a motion to approve. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. Counsel, we're moving on to 4A. We'll be approving the city warrants, we'll be approving the week of 6/4/25, and ratifying the week of 5/28/25. A motion would be in order.
So moved.
And a second? Who wants to be second? Would you concede? Thank you very much. You're a gentleman. So you got that. Okay. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, those opposed, so noted. Okay, counsel, we are at 4B. Obviously, I cannot preside over 4B, so councillor Deering, if you would be so kind, as a side note, I apologize, I was so far removed from this process. Obviously, I was conflicted out. The city made an error. Closing happened yesterday, so technically, we should have warned a special meeting and had this ratified prior to closing. So I didn't think of it until literally I was sitting at the closing table, and yeah. But I wasn't presiding over it. I just wanted to point that out to the council, and also add, it would really be interesting if you don't get four votes. It'd be a riot. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the ratification of council, 520's motion.
So moved.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay. Is there any discussion with that? Okay, hearing or seeing none. All those in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that will pass. Thank you very much. Okay, counsel, we'll move on to the city clerk and treasurer's report. How are you?
Doing good. How are you?
It's sunny. It's not, no, I'm not even going to say the R-word, but it's sunny. So I'm great.
Yep. And so with today's weather, actually, because right now, it's kind of quiet in the city clerk's office, I do want to introduce something that we have offered for quite a while, but I want to bring it to the front of, of the information that we have. We offer in the clerk's office what is called the Green Mountain Passport Program. And what it is, it's a passport for seniors, or anybody over 62, 62 and older, or military veterans, and you pay a $2 flat fee for a lifetime of free entry into many, many Vermont State Parks and historical sites throughout the state. The card itself cannot be transferred to any members, and it is only good for the holder. So if you had a car full of people, it only applied to you itself. You would just present that to the state parks staff, and they would allow you to enter free. I do have on the website a little more explanation of the program. I do have a complete map of all the state parks available, as well as some historic sites throughout the state, and the application, all together bundled under what is called the Green Mountain Passport Program. Now, as I was putting this together, I did receive from the state of Vermont, a free day use to state parks for eligible Vermonters. This applies to anyone who gets three squares Vermont, essential persons program, fuel assistance, general assistance, reach-up, summer EBT or WIC. If you get any of these programs, your family, the entire family, gets free entrance into the state parks. You just need to present your WIC card or your EBT card, and you will get free. If you do not, if you get a program that doesn't offer a card for proof, feel free to contact Economic Service Division, and they'll give you a special card to present to the state parks.
Very cool. Yes?
Is that program that's for people, is that, they would come and see you as well?
This program, no. This is just through the state.
Oh, okay.
It's nothing I can give them to offer. It's the Green Mountain Passport that you would come, fill out the application, and get the card.
Thanks.
Very cool. Do we have these two things on the city WIC?
Yep, I put them up today.
Awesome.
And I was hoping that Chris would put them, like, on the banner, so you'd be more prominent first thing that you would see once you walked in, but it is, all of this stuff is there. And lastly, it's not so exciting. Water and sewer bills were made, mailed out on Friday. They are due June 30 by 4:30 PM.
Thank you. Any questions for the city clerk and treasurer? All right. We'll move right along. Liquor and Cannabis Control Board is in session. You have four licenses?
I do, and then one catering service. And the reason why I brought this catering to the light is because it is requesting to serve alcohol in City Hall Park during the Pride Festival event, and it does have approval from Nick Kopping and Chief Vale, as long as they promise to uphold to the restriction in the perimeters that they presented on their application.
And they have.
And they, and they will. I'm sure they will. Then there's the other four that are just traditional first and third class, and some of them have piggybacked outside consumption on them. We have American Legion at 320 North Main, Cornerstone Restaurant at 47 North Main, the Elks Club at Ted Jefferson, and the Reynolds House at 102 South Main.
Any questions? Motion would be in order?
So moved.
So moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. Liquor and Cannabis Control Board is adjourned. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of updates for the council. Number one, paving, Merchant Row, as you probably saw on your way in, has been completed. The striping should commence next week. We're going to hire that out, just because of the volume of it. It'll, it would keep our staff busy for a while, so we've been working to get a contractor in to do the striping, hopefully next week. So just to, you know, ask folks to be alert for closures, we may need to shut it down while that's going on. But the paving was done, and they did a, did a great job. Allen Street, Prospect Street, Berlin Street are on tap for this year. DPW crews were working on prep for Allen Street this week. Those, those projects, they're doing the prep now, but the actual paving won't happen until July, August. We don't have the firm... We don't have the firm timeline yet from our paver, but it'll be in that general vicinity. And we are also evaluating, those were the streets we had on our paving plan before the additional $130,000 was added. So we are evaluating additional streets that we can add to our paving plan this year. So stay tuned for that as well. Just an alert for residents as well, that concerts in the park begin tomorrow, Wednesday, June 4th. These are at Courier Park. This is, of course, organized by the Berry Partnership. They've consolidated their, all their evening events into one night, hoping we can attract people to Courier Park, which is a great location. Farmer's Market is from 3:30 to 6:30. The food vendors will be there from 4 to 7 PM. And the concert, the music, is 5:30 to 7 PM. Believe they're just about every Wednesday, and you can check the partnership's website and their social media for the details. The chiller, the manifold, I've heard it called by many names, the big upgrade we did at the BOR essentially, is nearly complete. And so we're very happy with that. They've done great work there. The turf has been out of commission while that work was undergoing. So also really happy to get the turf back, and we expect it to be available the week of June 16th. So we'll start advertising that again, because, of course, while that replacement was going on, we couldn't have access to the facility. I had to, one of the coolest parts of the job is swearing in new police officers, and had the honor of swearing in Logan Protsman last week. Logan is headed to the police academy, and we're looking forward to having him join the force and start his shifts on patrol. And then just a sad moment, and I hope we can indulge a moment of silence for Detective Paula Russell, who passed away Sunday, May 11th, on Mother's Day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Paula was, you know, detective since 2023, left behind a husband, two children, just after a brief illness. And I had the, you know, the pleasure of, the last, she was on the union's negotiating team, and so I had the pleasure of spending quite a bit of time with her, her last year here with us. She, the first year we had a corporate cup team for the city of Berry, she was on it. It's two years to the day that she passed, so that was very difficult, but we're going to miss her.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Any questions for the manager? Okay, counsel, we'll move on to new business. We'll move on to 8A volunteer appointments. We'll be appointing to the Parks and Rec and Cemeteries Committee is, I don't see, oh, Haley's recording this online?
Yes, I just got an email from her, I'm not sure if she's, oh, there she is, she can do it, Haley, good.
Full disclosure, Nicholas, my fire alarms just all went off. I hope that doesn't happen again while I'm speaking with you all, but apologies in advance if it does. Looks spooky, you know, had a little kitchen incident, but all is well in the world now. Great timing.
Haley, you're, I think this'll, I think this'll be an easy one. You're a very active member of the community. We appreciate your service. Unless you have any questions, counsel, a motion to approve would be in order.
So moved.
Thank you. Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Sorry, it was so anticlimactic there, Haley, but I guess we just really like you.
I think the mayor's very excited.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, if I could just say, Mr. Mayor, while we're doing this appointment, this committee only had three members, one of them also very active, but she just started a business downtown and is very busy, Kat Allen. So my understanding is she's not re-upping. So unfortunately, this committee won't have a quorum, so just encouraging members of the council, members of the public, you know, I think Haley and Joshua have been doing some good work, together with Kat, who will not be continuing. But I think that, you know, encourage, you know, if you know anyone who's interested, who'd be a good fit, who wants to do great work with our facilities and recreation opportunities, to contact me, contact the committee, because unfortunately, once July 1 rolls around, they won't have a quorum, and I think that would be a shame, because we have two really good people ready to do some good stuff, so.
Fantastic. So hopefully, someone listening out there can help us out and be that third.
Yes.
Thank you again for your service, Haley. Okay, counsel, we'll move on to Irene Gilander and Star Paragoni Lacombe. Would you both like to come up? We could do a, we could do a twofer here. Because I have to be honest with you, I don't understand why you're here. You are both very, very active members of the committee. You know, I've sat in on a few of your meetings, you know, relative to the requests that the city received from Mr. Cozy, and everyone is really excited about doing great things with that. So I don't understand why you're here, and why you didn't have the support of the chair, but this is our process, so here you are.
I didn't actually ask Giuliano.
Oh, I got you. You could have saved yourself a trip.
But I decided to come independently.
It's great to see both of you again, anyway. So counsel, do you have any questions or a motion for both would be in order, as far as I'm concerned, but I'll leave that.
I moved their reappointment.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded. Anything you'd like to add? You came all the way here.
Well, it's going to be an exciting year for this committee with the money that, years, years. For this committee with the money that, and I think because Hope's going to benefit, it's going to domino down to the other two, and they won't, so I think it's, I think there's a lot of potential for some really good things to happen.
It's pretty exciting.
Yeah, really exciting.
Yeah, so, I mean, it will be, as you know, Mr. Cozy was hoping that the city could take some of those funds and install, you know, a significant fountain.
Yeah.
And I've talked to the committee about that, and, you know, they're really excited to get going on it. I think, I think we all know how special Hope Cemetery is, and what a special place it is, and, you know, this is just an amazing opportunity for the city.
It's amazing to find somebody, I mean, he really, you know, had a plan for what he wanted to do with this money. And, you know, it's great, at this time, too, with everything that's going on with the municipality, and you don't have any money, nobody has any money. But this money, he gave the cemetery, and we're going to do the best we can to.
Fantastic.
We're definitely looking for ideas.
Yeah.
Because we've decided, a fountain, is it round? Is it rectangular? Is it?
Right.
There are so many fountains out there, and we've looked all over, so we're beginning to design. That's what we're doing. So any ideas would be welcome.
It's exciting. You know, honestly, one of the things, I guess I'm more utilitarian, Irene, one of the things that, Eileen, excuse me, that, one of the things that struck me is, and you know this, because you've given so many tours at the cemetery, we don't have adequate facilities up there. So when folks are on a bus ride and they pull into the cemetery, we don't have facilities to offer them. And I actually discussed with the committee whether that might be possible to do a cool, durable restroom and face it with granite, and just have it there. So, and I've already heard lots of great ideas for the fountain, so I'm just excited for the future and excited for the opportunity, and grateful to the two of you, because I know how active the two of you are on this committee. So thank you very much.
Well, this will make it even more fun.
Yeah, you know. It's always more fun when you have resources, isn't it? It really makes it a lot more fun. So counsel, are there any questions for these two applicants? If not, oh, I'm sorry, Joel, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did, that's fine. I just wanted to offer that, one of the ways that we could get some income for the, for the, for the care of the cemetery, because it means a lot to me, too, is to, I would be happy to do a monthly tour, and whatever donation people give me, donate it to the committee. And also, I do, annually, I do a Labor Day tour focused on the labor history of Berry at the cemetery. And this year, it's going to be on Sunday, the 31st, at 1:30, at 2 o'clock, sorry. And if it's a rain day, it'll be the next day at 2:00. So I'm happy when I, when I, I mean, I don't charge for them usually, so, but I'm happy to begin doing that and donating it to the committee if that's their desire.
Cool.
Fantastic. Does the committee have your contact info, or could you forward it, please?
Okay, yes.
Fantastic, thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you again for your service. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we're a little bit late, but that's okay. Ms. Dawes, we have a 6:30 PM public hearing warned. This is for substantial, a substantial change request to our TIF district.
Good timing, Stephanie.
I was just happy.
I like to make it entrance.
Just in time.
Yes, hi, hello, everybody. You want me to go?
Please.
All right, hi again, I saw you two weeks ago. It's great to see you. So we're here tonight with the presentation again, but it's important that we go over some of the same things we went over a couple of weeks ago, just to make sure the public has all the information for folks tuning in today versus last time. Today is a public hearing, per the rules of the Vermont Economic Progress Council. So again, I'm Stephanie Clark with White and Burke. I am your consultant on TIF district matters and public-private partnerships. And Carol?
I'm Carol Dawes, I'm the TIF administrator for the city of Berry.
I could replicate Carol in every community I work in, I would. Just saying. So tonight, we're just going to talk through, I'm going to keep this fairly brief, but I want to make sure everybody has the information. So we're going to go through what the objective is of the evening, and update you on the timeline process. I want to do one more, what is TIF, just because it really requires reiteration sometimes, talk a little bit about the Downstreet Partnership, the actual nuts and bolts of this project, the Stevens Branch Apartments project, and finalize, finish up with next steps, and leave time for questions. So tonight's objective, again, is to review everything, including a few updates we have since the last time you saw the pack, but it's in your packet today, but updated from two weeks ago, highlight what we had discussed of the nuts and bolts of the partnership, do, make sure there's time for public input. And then you are asked to vote tonight on the three components, which is the development agreement, the option agreement for the land, and the letter to VEPSC to apply for the substantial change. So where we are, this is a lot of text, but hopefully can make some sense out of it. We're asking the council to approve the development agreement and the financials, and send this to the Vermont Economic Progress Council, and we will then submit this all to them, hopefully tomorrow, actually, the deadline is Friday. We will then have, hopefully, a hearing in July on the 31st. We open up, we leave it open that they might want to hold second hearing, which would be in August. And then following that, we will have a bond vote, and we're currently asking, projecting that we would put it on the ballot for November, because you have a couple other items being voted on in November at a special election. After that vote, the housing construction can commence. We can incur, we can go out to bid with our project and incur the debt, and start construction in spring, with the aim to open apartments for rent in summer 2027. This is the project, this is the goal. We like to really focus on the goal. The TIF piece of it is the how and getting there, but the why and where we're going is the affordable housing. This would be 31 new units of housing. Previously, we said 32, there's 32 units. One of them's not being leased out, it's a residential unit that Downstreet explained since then, but 31 leasable units. And that's why we're doing this. So this would be on Seminary Street, on the piece of property that the city currently owns, and you can go to the next. They have their DRB approvals already for that project. It's a partnership between Downstreet and Evernorth. What we're doing and proposing is to support them with infrastructure, support them with the public components that they could, if they built themselves, it wouldn't pencil, the project would not happen unless we provide the infrastructure. So Seminary Street, going from North Main Street to Summer Street, we're proposing to replace that sidewalk and plantings, to put plantings in there, to make that a more pedestrian-friendly and nice connection there. We're proposing to put in the utility lines there, to underground the power, because they otherwise wouldn't be able to get a fire truck to the building unless the power was underground. Otherwise, they'd have to set the building back really far from the street, which we don't like from a planning perspective. And then because we're relocating, we're eliminating that parking lot, we need to do an upgrade to the existing parking lot that you see there on the right-hand side of the screen. So those are our infrastructure improvements, and that's how we'll support them. And then also Brownfield, sorry, we are also contributing to their Brownfield remediation, which is a big one, because they have a lot of contamination. We have a lot of contamination there. It is a city lot, it is contaminated, and it needs remediation, and that's expensive. So to help offset that, we're going to contribute to that as part of this package. So the way we're doing it without touching the tax rate is using TIF. You have a TIF district, which means that you are able to bond for an improvement, and then pay down the debt service on that improvement using the incremental, the new taxes generated by the development, private development, and that will pay down the debt. And the way that works in the city of Berry is that you have a whole district, and the district has been creating increment now since its inception, and will continue to create increment, which, because there's been projects that have been done, and that helps generate the revenue needed to bring down, to pay down the debt service. It's a mature district, so it has increment already, and the new project will also generate increment. Again, that will not touch the local tax rate as a result, because you're retaining state and local dollars to do that. So when we proposed this, we showed you that there were a few different pieces to the puzzle. One is the development agreement, that's the legal instrument, and it really sets out all the expectations of everybody, the contingencies, the off-ramps, in case things go wild or sideways, because this, obviously, we're projecting a construction project that's nine months out, and a lot can happen between now and then. We've projected that we can borrow up to 2.6 million, so we've put that, that upper limit in our development agreement with them, even though you'll see that there's only a $2.4 million bond proposed. And it also provides for, like I said, contingencies for design. That's the legal instrument. That's what we're asking you to sign tonight, as well as the extension of the option. And then the financials is that big workbook we sent you, that has all the pages, and that shows how this is financially viable. And we had made some slight changes to that since you last saw it, but it doesn't change the overall net viability by any substantive amount, and we're asking, it doesn't change the bond amount, which was 2.4 million plus related costs, and it shows the cash flow of all of that, that you're not going to go negative and have to do any borrowing, because there's going to be sufficient increment in the fund. And that's what you're approving by signing the letter to go to VEPSC, and you're approving this as a substantial change. So we're asking for the signatures on the two legal instruments and the letter authorizing the, this public-private partnership. And then we intend to go to those summer meetings and the bond vote in the fall. That was a lot of information, sorry.
So was assessed value, was it raised from prior? I know that was talk, wasn't it like 1.2 million?
1.3, so it's still 1 point, projected is 1.3, yeah. So was it zero?
Do you think?
Is that going to stay? It's completely dependent on the statute, so state statute dictates how a property that is affordable housing is assessed. Right now, based on that formula and our inputs, we all think it'll be 1.3, very subject to change.
We benefit from the fact that it's basically zero value property right now, because it's owned by the city, unlike a parcel that was owned by, you know, an owner that already has taxable value, who's already paying taxes, as well, looking at the increment from here to here, we're looking at the increment from here to here. So, so all of it, or almost all of it, is increment.
I'm just thinking, if you have 30 units divided by 1.3, the units aren't very where they should be.
No, and it, I mean, if it was a market rate of housing, it would be double that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, this is a statutory formula, and yet, yeah, so that could change. But as I said in our last meeting, I just want to make sure the council is very comfortable with the fact that we stress test, tested the model to show that if there was some massive legislative change that changed the statutory formula such that they paid zero assessed value, we would still be sufficiently covered by increment, which is the benefit of having a mature district.
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but in the small group meeting that we had, you said that, essentially, even if the project went sideways, that we would still break even?
Yeah, yep, exactly.
And essentially, in about 20 years or so, the project will pay itself off?
Yeah, what it means is that if it went sideways and there was nothing, there was no increment.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd be able to pay all of your debt service, and it would still close.
Two separate thoughts.
Yes, okay, so yes, I mean, yes.
Yeah, they weren't, they weren't combined, no. The first one was assuming that we, you know, the project didn't complete, went sideways, we talked that it would be net zero, we wouldn't lose anything. lose anything on it. We'd be positive. And the second one was just a separate.
Okay. I think I understand.
They weren't together. No. It wasn't if, you know, we have a net zero, would it?
Do pay off. I see. You're saying, yes, it does get paid off in 20 years. Yes.
Like 2045, I think, was the payoff date.
Right. I think, yeah, what year is it? 25, 26? Yeah. So something like that fiscal year 20, it might be 47 because of fiscal year. But also, it's, yeah, we've been projecting a 20-year bond term. That could change. I mean, sorry, whenever we talk with the city finance team, and they're, they're allowed to do whatever borrowing they want to do. If they, if they can do a 15-year, it could end sooner, for example. The thing with bonds, you're not allowed to pay them off early. So that's one aspect of this that I can't control.
One more question. So in front of it, I don't know what is now bank. It's really high. So I'm assuming this project has to be lifted as well above, you know, compared to sea level now? Do you know that or not?
I don't know the specifics.
I don't either, but the ground floor is not residential.
Correct.
Yeah.
So it's the upper floors that will be residential. The ground floor is.
Office and storage.
And parking.
Parking. Thank you.
So, so that's how they're getting around the raising the building. Their, their building, the underneath doesn't have.
I mean, it looks better if it's not raised, but yeah.
Right. Yeah, I.
But it's going to be landscaped in.
Correct. I understand that. Yeah.
Any other questions? So you did a great job putting this together. I actually like the numbers. When I say I like the numbers, I like looking at the numbers. I mean, concerns I have, you know, straight up, we, this is going to be no surprise. When I look at individual projects, I expect them to carry their own water. And this project is not. So if we look at the, you know, $2.6 million in debt service, take that at 4%, the payments on that are $110,000. This project will generate 40, 30, 40-ish in revenue, so far short. We certainly couldn't do, if you said, hey, we've got the opportunity to do three of these projects, we don't have that capacity. Because, so this project is actually burning up a little bit of capacity that we have existing in our TIF district. You know, that gave me a little concern, but that's why we have TIF districts. And that's why, you know, that's why I'm going to support it, because we need 31 units of affordable housing in Barry. And right now, we have a bird in the hand. I'm hopeful with the CDBGDR funds, we have birds all over the place. But that's not a bird in the hand. So.
One of the nice things is that.
And lastly?
Yes.
You want me to support it?
Yes.
Okay. So, when have I let you down, Carol?
There's, as, as we know, the legislature approved as part of the flood recovery bill, a two-year extension for us. So that buys us additional time. We do have additional capacity in the TIF district. And so it's not our intention in any way, shape, or form to say, this is it, and we'll go.
Right.
We will have the next 18 months or more to look at what there might, what other opportunities there might be in the current TIF district, let alone the opportunities associated with Chippewa and the North End and Prospect Heights. And, you know, and because they've removed all the restrictions associated with, you can't have, you know, it used to be, if you have TIF districts, you can only have one. You got to wait until the thing is over. These will be able to, there'll be a lot of other opportunities that will be.
So what, so, excuse me, so originally, it was for parking. So it's been converted to housing, correct? And that's gone through?
It's not, it's not so much a conversion, because of course, this includes parking. It includes enhancements to the parking lot that's behind the building. It includes shifting some of the parking that's there. It's just expanding the focus from parking to include housing, because in the past 12 years.
So that's done. That's been done. That's, okay.
Well, and that's part of the substantial change we're, we're making to the, to the district. And I'd be remiss in not, and I don't want to burn up more agenda time, but I did, I'd be remiss in saying that when we started this, we did not have a two-year extension. So this was our final project. So burning up capacity was not an issue. And that's how we actually got this project into this, interested in it. We said, we have TIF capacity. What, you know, can we make this work for you? And so we are now similarly in a great position, and I'll use this as an opportunity to say, for you all, to keep your ears and eyes open for another opportunity to do another project in the TIF district. We want to do something. We know we have extra capacity in the district, even more so if the project itself creates a lot of increment. So.
Counsel, was there something to add?
I just want to add, I remember later too, but having a, so I spoke with Senator Ann Cummings, who's Chair of Senate Finance, to get the two-year TIF extension included in the flood bill. And the fact that we had a shovel-ready project to bring to her is why this got done. So as you all are, now that we have two more years of added capacity, the more, to Stephanie's point, the more shovel-ready designed projects that we can bring, both to VEPSC and to the legislature, just help everything move along even more swiftly.
Yeah. And, and this will be, I mean, honestly, in some respects, I can't believe we pulled this off, the extra two-year extension. And plenty of legislators, including Senator Ram Hinsdale, who has been an incredible friend of Barry, as well of our own representatives and senators. You know, the first two-year extension was, well, it was COVID, which was true. And then the second one, well, what was it? You know, it was floods. And, yeah. So the last question they asked me is, okay, Lozam, what's it going to be next? Yeah, locusts, probably. So, no, it, listen, we, we sit, right now, the city sits in a pretty good position. We're providing 31 units of affordable housing. This other development and other, this other actual development going on in our downtown, and there's actual, and there's other potential development within our downtown. And we all heard ACCD's presentation on the CBD GDR funds. You know, 50 million of that is going to come to Washington County with an emphasis on housing. So there will be other projects within Barry City. So this, you know, that two-year extension for us was huge. It was, it was huge. Yes. Peter Anthony? Oh, you, are you muted, Peter, or are you just not coming through? Nope, you're, no sound yet. Is your mic working? You're not muted on our end. There it is. Try that.
Okay. Can you hear?
There you go. Yep, you're good.
Thanks very much. I just wanted to reiterate something that former secretary, pardon me, City Clerk Dawes had expressed some angst about. The creation of affordable housing is, is welcome. The difficulty for the legislature and for us is that they have made the host community essentially suffer a grand list discount. And I'm sure you're aware of this. Carol Dawes certainly is. And there's a point at which you have to say, I don't want to be faced with a trade-off of doing the right thing, but I also don't want to continually sacrifice the revenue potential of development in the city. And unfortunately, that's what we're faced with, with affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are hoping that we see, you know, the 31 apartments, 31, at least 31 people, we're hoping maybe 31 families. Some of the units are two-bedroom, three-bedroom. And so we're hoping that we see additional foot traffic in the downtown, that it has, you know, auxiliary benefits to the community by having other people here. I met with VEPSC yesterday. Yesterday was our spring monitoring visit for the TIF district, and we spent a lot of time talking about this, kind of hearing it up to letting them know that they're going to be receiving it before the end of the week. They're very excited about it. They were really helpful in answering some of our sort of last-minute questions. And so I think that, that the road is paved. So, yeah.
Fantastic. Any other questions, counsel? Okay. Do we need to, so procedurally, Madam Clark, do we need to, can we do these? We don't actually need a motion. We don't need an approval for item 8B, do we? The substantial change?
Just close the hearing.
Isn't that?
Close the hearing.
I would, I would say that you, to be on the safe side, I would recommend that you take a motion to approve the development agreement.
Right. That's, that's item 8. That's item 8C. Oh, sorry about that. 8B is just the, so I think I just need to close the public hearing. We don't need action.
Ask for any additional public comment and close the hearing.
I did. I will. Again. Counsel or audience, any other questions? Okay, hearing none. I will close the 6:30 PM public hearing warrant for the TIF district substantial change request. Counsel, we kind of wrapped up item 8C into this discussion, so a motion to approve the TIF development agreement would be in order.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Pick your pick. Okay. Any other discussion, counsel? Other than I'm really going to be watching that contingency, and I'm really, really going to be watching cost shifting. So just let them know. I'm the numbers guy. Okay. All those in favor, the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much for your good work. We appreciate you. And we'll see you again.
Thank you. I think they should approve submitting the request to, to VEPSC, the substantial change.
Okay. We'll have to, counsel, I'll ask for a motion to approve submitting the request to VEPSC. We'll have to get that on for ratification next week.
So moved.
Thank you. And moved and seconded, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much.
Nicholas, you probably have the signature copy.
I did that.
Yes, he already have it.
Did that in advance of the meeting, and then, you know, if it doesn't work, I just grab it back and rip it up. Thank you very much, both of you. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, we're at item eight. I said it was going to be C. It's actually going to be D, and then we'll move on to legislative update. This is approving the changes to the cemetery regulations. Counselor Bergeron, did you have questions?
Yeah, I did. And I was just concerned, just putting it on the consent agenda, because I had, I had a few issues with it.
Sure, go for it.
I was hoping someone from the cemetery, you know, director would be here, but I don't think, you know, we spent several years changing the rules for the cemetery. That wasn't a change. It's always been a rule in the cemetery, one monument per lot. I think changing that's going to raise some issues. Who's going to be, who's going to be the judge jury as to, yes, you can put a monument here, and then someone else can't put a second monument on their lot. And the, it may eventually affect our revenue source of selling lots. If someone doesn't want to buy a lot, and they just want to be buried in, say, their parents' lot, and then put another monument in. I think, you know, there was a lot of, we were trying to do a lot of uniformity when we set those rules up. And I hate to see us get away from that, because I think it's going to cause problems down the road.
Yeah, I respond to it. Sure, I can address sort of why the issue came up. And it's, there was, this is related to Mr. Gary Sassy, whose family is buried at Hope, and he was looking to add, he wasn't looking to add sort of a second plot to the, to the family lot, but, but basically a statue of, of an angel looking at his parents' grave. We, you know, I think there's been some, and I agree with Counsel Bergeron, I think that having hard and fast rules is good. I think in, it's sort of shifted over time, and that's why we ended up in a place of gray area, because benches aren't counted as monuments, and several, several plots do have both the, you know, the burial spot and a bench as well. This one happens to be a statue instead of a bench. I think that's where one of the issues came up for Mr. Sassy about saying, why is, why is a bench allowed and not this monument? I know that I've, I wasn't at the committee meeting where this particular amendment was discussed, but I've been at meetings where the committee has discussed this topic in particular. I know that many members of the committee feel that, that, and their impetus for bringing this forward is that, at the end of the day, the Hope Cemetery and Elmwood Cemetery and St. Monica's, they're, they're about, they're places where people bury loved ones. And so we should, where we can and where it's tasteful, sort of defer to the families. So again, I'm just, this is the, this is the discussion that happened at the committee level. I think people can certainly disagree or fall on both sides of that debate. But that's, that's the general impetus. And I know that the committee had sort of wanted a resolution to this topic. And I believe at their last meeting, they, they came up with, with this language to do so. So that's, that's just the background. You know, I, I think that this is a topic where I think people can very reasonably come to, on both sides of it for, for very fair reasons. The committee brought it forward based on the context that I shared of Mr. Sassy's monument. From what I can share from the cemetery foreman, Donnie Bullard, he's, you know, we've, we've all reviewed the designs for the monument. It's very tasteful. It's, you know, I've done very, you know, it's a very beautiful monument. It's certainly not going to detract from the beauty of, of Hope Cemetery. And it's, you know, if it also meets the goal of, of allowing Mr. Sassy to honor his parents, that was, that was why, you know, we, we didn't have any sort of objection from the staff level. But again, I can understand people falling on both sides of it.
How does, may I ask a question? How does, so Karen and I have plots at Hope Cemetery. Never occurred to us to have someone join us. So do we allow only one burial per lot?
What do you have, a two-grade?
Yeah.
So you can have two full burials. You could have one full burial, two cremations. So if, for each single lot, you can put two cremations in.
Yeah, got you.
So if you've got a two-grade lot, you could have up to four cremations and two full burials.
Right. But you only have one stone, one memorial.
Yes.
So if you start putting benches and statues, eventually, they're going to have people under those. That's where the problem's going to make.
It's, you can only put a monument or a bench or anything on your lot, right? So this is, this particular monument that Mr. Sassy would like to erect is, would be fully contained within the, you know, it's basically like a parcel, right, that he's purchased. So it would be within the lot that he owns. It wouldn't be infringing on anybody else's burial area. And so that's why I think, and again, I'm channeling the cemetery committee. I, like I said, I can understand why people are, can be on both sides of it. You know, I believe they would probably say, if they were here, that, you know, if it's tasteful and, you know, fits within the other regulations of the cemetery, that people should be able to mourn their loved ones in the way that they choose, right? And so some people choose to do a bench, so they can sit at the place where their loved ones are buried. Mr. Sassy has chosen to do this, this, this angel monument, which again, is fully contained within his lot. He wouldn't be able to put this on.
I guess that's what I'm saying. Eventually, they're going to start wanting to put something that, okay, we want a statue, but can we, we want to put another person under there as well. So now you're going to open a can of worms.
You, you couldn't, you couldn't do, you couldn't put anything on any lot that is not owned by you.
And it has to be within that number. Like, if, like you've got a four-grade lot, then it's four graves. It's not. You can't have four and put a fifth one in.
That's what I'm saying. People are going to start doing that in the future, if they allowed to put a statue or now bench.
Well, they wouldn't, because they couldn't. They, they can't now. I mean, the way Counsel Bergeron was explaining it to me, tell me if I got it wrong, if you were cremated, two people in one lot. If you, if it is a full burial, if you're not cremated, one person in one lot. So this, allowing this wouldn't change that. You could still have four, four people in two lots or two people in one lot. So that's not changing, the number of people who could be buried. And as I look at our rules currently, if someone wanted to put three benches on their lot, they could. They can't put three monuments, but they could put three benches. So, yeah. I mean, you know, it's a tough one. We can always change policies if it, you know, my thought is, you know, again, as I was saying, to the, you know, to our two applicants to the Cemetery Commission, they really try to be thoughtful about things. And we could change this. If, if it did, I mean, I think we all agree that Hope is a very special place. What Mr. Sassy is proposing certainly, certainly is thoughtful and respectful and is going to be a welcome addition to Hope Cemetery. I'm not making this about Mr. Sassy and about his family's history. It's not about that. I'm thinking forward. I don't think that it is something that is necessarily going to be abused. And if it is, we can change it really quickly. I'll likely support this. Yes, counsel?
I, well, I understand concerns about what if we open the door. I think there are reasonable restrictions already built into the language as proposed, that it does have two levels of approval before. that it does have two levels of approval before this is expanded. So this is not, this doesn't feel to me like any kind of slippery slope. This feels to me like a possibility if it passes all sorts of other litmus tests. So I'm, I'm fine with it.
Counsel Dearing?
I just have a problem with the interpretation of the director, really. You know, essentially, we're not having any guidelines. We're saying that it's up to the interpretation of the cemetery director about whether or not somebody can put it there. And then where the cemetery position can change hands at the drop of a hat and could go from somebody who's more lenient and wants to have things to somebody who's very strict and says, we don't want these. It would be nice to have it written out in a clear-cut policy so people know what to expect as opposed to have it kind of to the interpretation of the director. So that's my concern with the policy.
Got you. Counsel Spohley?
My concern with this, I, I'm fine with the language. My concern is that in light of what just happened with the rec committee, or it's about to happen with the rec committee, if we don't have a cemetery committee, then they wouldn't be able to approve it. So should there be an alternative that it comes to the city council? Or in case the cemetery committee doesn't have a quorum and is not able to meet, then that puts that family in a precarious position.
Yeah, interestingly, I don't know that the cemetery committee has ever not had a quorum. It's, it's, and the folks who, I'm sorry.
That's always been a full committee.
Yeah, and, and, you know, hey, we're, we're fortunate. I, I understand your concern, but I'm not saying it couldn't happen, but it's a hypothetical and it, it hasn't happened. We tend to have very dedicated members of the cemetery committee and it always tends to be a full committee. So I don't have an issue. I, and I, you know, I won't be here forever, but I sure, I sure don't want to make that decision.
I'm just, I'm just concerned about the fact that we're putting this on to Ms. Counsel Dearing's point. If you have a different director and then you have, let's say, at some point, a defunct cemetery committee, then what happens to this exception? It just kind of, because that, that could potentially happen. If it switches and then you have someone and then the cemetery committee thinks, I don't really want to work with this person anymore, and then your committee all resigns, you're kind of up a...
Yes, Eileen. Yeah, would you mind coming up to the microphone if you're, if you're going to see? Only because the folks can't hear you if they're online. Thank you.
I was at that meeting and the rules are there for a reason and they have been there for years for a reason. And it makes Hope Cemetery the special place that it is. Mr. Dearing has brought up a very interesting point. We have a director now who knows nothing about Hope Cemetery and doesn't care.
Ma'am, be careful.
Excuse me?
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Do I take that back?
Yeah, I'd like to respond to that.
I would like to rescind that statement.
Well, we're just, we're not here to discuss the cemetery director. We're discussing a policy.
Well, the rules are there because that if it comes to you, then you know the rule says one monument per plot and there's no question. And the cemetery committee is afraid that this will open the door to a slippery slope, that people will say, because people have come in the past to say they want to put a squirrel or they want to put something like that. And it's not a memorial to grieve, it's just the thing. And we're afraid that this is going to change the cemetery. And so we're very concerned about keeping the rules, the rules.
Yes. Just one thing. I would just come back to, because I've been at cemetery committing, meetings where this was discussed and we've disagreed on this topic. I would say that cemeteries are places where people grieve their loved ones who are in the ground. And that's, I know nothing about cemeteries until I took this job and that was my position when I, when this issue has come up. So I think this is a decision rightfully for the council and I think they, they can't go wrong. But I, I just have to, I wasn't going to speak more until you brought up those comments that I think it's, it's important to remember that it's, it is a beautiful place, but it is essentially a place where people have a grandparent, a loved one in the ground that they come to visit. And, and if they want a squirrel, I think they should have a squirrel because that's maybe the way they want to grieve their loved one who loved feeding squirrels, right? And so I, I just want to be clear about that. I think the cemetery committee had several thoughtful discussions about this and I just want to be clear for the record that they recommended this with a majority vote. So I understand Ms. Galander's here speaking as a member of the committee, but that the committee as a whole, with many respected members of the community, did support this change.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yes, could you, could you come up though because they, we can't hear you?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Folks at home can't.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. One is, does the Hope Cemetery, the backside, the older side, still not take any black, black granite?
Can't have any other color than berry gray in the whole cemetery.
In the whole cemetery? I have seen some black stones there.
From years ago.
Okay, so, but now there's none?
Correct.
Okay. Another thing I wanted to ask, can you put plaques like a, like a one-stop-and-shop type deal? So like even if they're not there and people are cremated and broadcasted somewhere else, can you not just have a plaque with their name, date and expiration and born?
You can have...
Without having anybody under it?
A flat marker?
A grass marker.
Yeah, you could have a, you could have a grass marker. You couldn't have a bronze plaque, for example. You could have a, you could have a berry gray marker with their name and their date of birth and their date of death and anything else you wanted to put on it, even if that person is not interred there. For example, if you spread their ashes in the ocean.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, they could still have...
Just placate.
Yep.
And it doesn't have to be a certain size? I mean, can you put as many as you want?
You...
No.
No, you can't put as many as you want. And there are...
I mean, you can't go outside of what you own. I've got five up there, a few plaques that I'd like to add of family that had been cremated and are not going to be there. However, it's, it's a place for them to be seen when they go see everybody else that is there.
I'm going to let Counsel Bergeron...
If it's in their lot and there's room, yeah, you can, you can put grass markers in and they're, they are standard size.
Like put it right over the people that are already buried there?
Yeah, well, I suggest that you talk to Don Bullard or Tom Baker about it, but they're, they have to be no more than one foot by two foot.
Okay. Okay. Here's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Off of all the other things we've been talking about, if I make some suggestions for the typos in the intro section, would that be considered a substantial change that we would have to revote later? Or can I just follow up with that?
No, you can.
Thank you.
No, correction of typograph, correction in any instance, the correction of a typographical error is not considered a substantial change.
Okay, thank you. I will follow up later on.
Yes?
In that same vein, the, the committee members, it says Jeff Bergeron is the cemetery director.
That's the...
And I'm thinking that might be a little outdated.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, well, that was 2016.
16? So I'm just hoping that will be updated when this gets revised?
Correct. If, if the amendment was approved, I was going to change the, the heading, remove Jeff's name as director and then update the members of the committee. But that was assuming the, the change was...
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, counsel? Yes, Counsel Booten. You're not Counsel Booten anymore, you're Representative Booten.
It's getting demoted tonight.
Just out of curiosity, when you purchase the plot, does it have language in there that says that you can only have one stone?
Yeah, I believe you handed the rules and regulations at that point.
I just, I was just curious.
Thank God, I thought you were going to ask about dogs in the cemetery.
Nope. I am not.
No, you are not. So counsel, what is your pleasure?
I would move to approve, what am I moving, the changes to cemetery regulations.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Yeah, this one is interesting. Sometimes I wish I had a little more time to consider it because we've, we've had some, we've had some really good points made on both sides. I know there are times when I'll go to the cemetery to visit folks and, you know, you walk by a grave and I see a teddy bear or I see a toy car and, you know, technically that's not really within the rules. You can't, it just makes me sad when I see it. It doesn't make me, but I think for the most part, people, people are respectful. I mean, on occasion, people have left things there a little too long and, and if that happens, you know, if that teddy bear started to get moldy, we pick it up and we don't throw it away, but we pick it up and we'll put it in the shed and let people know that it's there. I mean, I agree partially with Nicholas that, you know, it is a place to grieve and we all, we all grieve differently. But then again, it's, Hope Cemetery is a pretty special place. I mean, literally, it's an outdoor museum and you look at some of those monuments and it's just, you know, it, it's just incredible. And now, you know, I think a lot about Mr., the opportunities that we have because Mr. Cozy, we've never had millions of dollars to put into the cemetery to keep it pristine and to keep it a place where people want to visit. And not just people who have loved ones buried there, but people who have never heard of Bar Vermont yet. They've heard of Hope Cemetery, but they've heard of Hope Cemetery and, and they want to visit. So, you know, I'm, I'm going to support this and I would also consider changing it back. And believe me, I hear about Hope Cemetery all the time. We had a very wet season leading up to Memorial Day and people were, you know, people weren't, are never shy and wary about calling me up on Memorial Day to let me know that they weren't horribly impressed with the condition of the cemetery. But when I explain to them that it's been raining for 11 days and if we drive a tractor across your loved one's grave to mow it, we're going to leave tractor tracks all over the cemetery and I think you'll be even more upset. So I think if things get out of hand, I think people, you know, with this policy, I think people are going to let us know. And if I see things getting out of hand, I'll be the first one to raise my hand and say, maybe this was a mistake, you know, and maybe we should change it back. So I'm going to support this and, you know, give the committee, it was a vote of the entire committee and majority vote of the committee and the staff and I'm going to give them the respect and latitude that they deserve, so.
I'm okay with it as long as it's, you know...
We can change it. You know, that's the wonderful thing about ordinances and policies. If they don't work, we can always change them, kind of like the Constitution, just sooner. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. Ayes have it. Thank you very much. Okay, counsel, now we will move on to the legislative delegation update. Oh, sure, legislature adjourns and no jackets and ties.
I don't think...
I don't think...
Oh, that's right, you're not. You're just, you're just in a timeout.
So I'm going to focus mainly on CHIP and Representative Wazizak is going to take on the flood bill. Just a couple of things. H10 did pass, the governor signed it. That is our charter changes. I was listening to the TIF conversation and we're talking about brownfields and how Berry City has a lot of brownfields. Unfortunately, the money was taken out of that budget. Well, it was lowered than what the governor had originally put in. The wetlands legislation, it's not going to go anywhere. I, I'm sorry to report that to you.
Oh, we'll, we'll be having that discussion. That was the, that political maneuvering that happened at the end, we had that support. The political maneuvering that happened at the end to directly block that, trust me, I don't forget.
So I don't know what...
Oh, no, not you, not either of you. You guys were great.
Yeah, I don't know what happened on the Senate side. I know that on the House side...
I know what happened. People are going to hear about it. But I digress.
I will go to the housing bill. So S20, 127, the Vermont rental, well, the housing bill that, that was passed out of house, it went to the Senate and then came back. The, the N bill had the Vermont rental housing program, which provides grants and forgivable loans up to $70,000 per unit existing. But there, there are stipulations into it. The people that are going to be served would be people exiting homelessness, immigrant population, those that are disabled, or those that are displaced by disaster. The brownfields mitigation, remediation in there was $2 million. CHIP, the Community Housing Infrastructure Program, which is similar to a TIF. It's a project-specific TIF. The, the Commerce and Economic Development Committee did get that. We, we got it from the Senate. Of course, I was very perfectly fine with the Senate version, but we were told we had to put some guardrails in it. Our committee begrudgingly put some guardrails into it and then we, we sent it on. It, there was additional guardrails that were added on, but after the conference committee, which I would have to say that Kasia Ronhansdale, she did a phenomenal job advocating for that program. What came out of that was the BUT4 test, the 60% residential required for floor space, affordable housing, a component of it, a cap of $2 million to the Ed Fund retention. The interest...
200 million.
2 million, sorry, 200 million, sorry. Thank you for correcting me. It does say 200 million there. I just don't know how to read.
If it wasn't that big of a difference, it wouldn't...
The retention, it's interesting. The normal is 75 for the education portion and then 85 for the municipal. But if there is a affordable housing component in it, it brings it up to 85%. So that's, that's pretty cool. The Commerce and Economic, like I said, we worked hard on that and it, it, it's sad that a piece of that legislation was removed. And committee worked hard to maintain the piece about remediation. And unfortunately, the CHIP program is now only for new, new buildings, whereas it originally had the ability to use the CHIP program to create project-specific TIFs in our floodplains where we could raise up houses and keep people in their houses. It's unfortunate that that did not pass, but that's okay because we have another year and that will be on my list of things to add to a bill. Yeah, it was, it was very sad. The Rural Caucus did try to fix that, but unfortunately that did not pass either. Other than that, the, you know, the two-year TIF extension did pass and we're getting our money back for the reimbursement, which all is in the flood bill, which I will pass it over to Teddy Wazizak for that.
Thank you, Representative Booten. So I'm going to talk about both, I'm going to talk about a couple pieces of legislation, namely the flood bill, which is H397, this year's state budget, as well as this year's state capital bill, because there are pieces of the original flood bill that got moved around to different places. There's, I threw spaghetti at whatever wall for whatever bill I could find that was tangentially related to flood recovery and municipal support money. So, and, and I would ask, just in, if you have questions, just hold them until I'm done explaining the pieces because I might answer one of your questions while I'm going through. So in H397, which has passed both chambers, the governor has not received it yet, but I've talked to the administration and there are no flags that they have, so I'm assuming that this will be signed by the governor when he eventually receives it. Representative Booten mentioned the two-year extension to our TIF district as well as the refunds for the overpayment of the increment that we have. Those, those are both in 397. Nicholas came in to testify about specifically river monitoring devices that we've talked a lot about over the past two years. In 397, there is a requirement for Vermont Emergency Management to assist municipalities in accessing that technology. So it's, you know, they can no longer say like, oh, we don't have the time or the people to do it. They have to do it because of 397. And importantly, 397 adjusts our local options tax share. Right now, the city keeps 70% of all local options tax revenue and 30% goes to the state. 397 will switch that to be 75%, stays with the city, 25% goes to the state. And Nicholas and Don have the numbers on how much additional revenue that will generate.
65 to 70,000.
Per year.
Per year, yes.
That will be continuing to come into Berry City. Switching over to the... Switching over to the capital bill, which is our buildings bill every year that we do in the legislature, is $2.5 million for housing projects. Originally, the governor had proposed $1 million specifically for Prospect Heights. The legislature, through the process, decided to expand that. And it's 2.5 million for general housing projects. But I've been in communication with the mayor, who's been in communications with the agency, and Prospect Heights is, you know, their top priority when it comes to getting money out of the door for this. So it does not say 1 million for Prospect Heights, but they know we're coming. And we are by far the best-prepared project from a housing perspective that they are going to be looking at when it comes to this program. So that's in the capital bill. And then switching over to the budget, there is a lot of really good stuff that passed in this year's budget. First is the Municipal Grand List Stabilization Program, which bipartisanship is not dead, I worked with the governor's office on. The Municipal Grand List Stabilization Program refunds the city for lost property tax revenue from properties that go through the FEMA buyout process. So as you all know, when a property is bought out by FEMA, green space forever. And you lose all that property tax revenue. So what the Municipal Grand List Stabilization Program does is every property that goes through that buyout process, for the first five years, the city will be reimbursed at 100% of that lost grand list tax value. And for the following five years, 50% of the lost. So 10 years of total support, 100% for the first five years, 50% for the following five years. And that was designed to be a mechanism to do what you guys did tonight, which is approve a new housing project, right? That's going to bring a whole bunch of new property tax revenue. But it takes time to get those things built. It gets time, it takes time for those projects to go through the process. So what this program aims to do is, you know, ease the path and make it less of a shock to the city system when we lose that grand list revenue and give it time for more housing units to come online. Additionally, in the budget is the $50,000 in direct municipal operations support that was originally in the Budget Adjustment Act that the governor vetoed. Life went on and that language just got rolled into the state budget, which has since been signed. So that money will be coming. There is $30 million for non-federal FEMA match, which was something the state did last year. For these FEMA matches, it's often 90-10 or 75-25 that the state or the town have to kick in. So there's 30 million there for those local matches. And similarly, there's $15 million in the state budget for denied FEMA claims, which I'm not sure that we actually have any denied FEMA claims because our cases were pretty obvious.
They were pretty clear.
But if FEMA gives y'all bad news in the next couple of weeks that any of our claims were denied, there's $15 million in the state budget for that. As Representative Booton touched on, there is brownfield remediation money in the housing bill. There's also some in the state budget. It was not as much as the governor asked for. But between, there's the housing bill, the state budget, and there's one other bill that had brownfield money in it that I can never remember what it is. Between those three bills, there's $4 to $5 million of state money for brownfield remediation that is available. And one of my favorite ones, because it's super nerdy, is 1.5 million for non-federal disaster highway and road repairs. In other words, if we get flooded and Main Street gets knocked out, but it doesn't rise to the level of a federal disaster, there's some money there to help fix those roads quicker. Other pieces of specifically the flood bill that are less specific to Berry, but nonetheless very helpful, is a stakeholder process. Every year, the state puts together their emergency management plan and that's sort of been done in a vacuum before. The state just does it and then they tell everyone else what the plan is. The flood bill will require that they talk to stakeholders, that they talk to towns, that they talk to cities, that they talk to our long-term recovery groups when they're putting together. Because as we've learned over the past three years, no one knows more what we need in the aftermath of a flooding disaster than us. And so municipalities having a seat at that table is going to make our response systems a lot stronger. And then there's some other stuff in the flood bill that's more related to assisting smaller municipalities, small towns specifically in the Northeast Kingdom. They needed legislative approval to do things that the city of Berry can already do, like the unassigned fund balance charter change going from 5% to 10%. Berry City can already do that. There was a loophole in state law where if you didn't have a charter, you couldn't do that. And that created a huge problem for towns like Plainfield, who just like straight ran out of cash in the aftermath of a disaster. They couldn't use money from last year and they have no emergency power. So that's in the flood bill too, to help those smaller towns have the same tools that Berry City has in the aftermath of a flooding disaster. A different topic, the homelessness situation. The legislature has passed H91. It is unclear whether the governor will sign H91 or not. And that sets up a regional approach as opposed to a statewide approach with addressing homelessness. I have a lot of issues with H91, but I voted for it because I was able to work with Senator Ginny Lyons and there is $1 million of supports for municipalities. Nicholas was kind enough to write a letter in support of that provision because the H91 system is not designed to start until July 1 of 2026. And I said, and I get it, there are logistical challenges. You can't just change a system overnight, make it active tomorrow and say, we're good to go. There's people that need to be hired, there are systems that need to get set up. But I said, you know, how does that help Berry, who's facing a crisis right now? And the answer was, it didn't. So I said, fine, I agree we have to get to a better system, but our towns need help now. So there's $1 million in the budget and in H91 for municipalities that have hosted the hotel motels that are in the program, of which we have, I believe, three. And then, last thing I'll mention also in the budget is we're going back in two weeks to continue working on education. But with everything that's happening at the federal level right now in terms of interruption of federal funding flowing to states and municipalities, many of us felt that it, typically, the legislature meets January through May and then we're done. Many of us felt that it would be irresponsible to just walk away when God only knows what's going to happen next week with any given federal program. So in the budget, we built in certain benchmarks to, for example, if federal funding decreases by more than 4% over the next couple of months, the legislature will reconvene so we can look at the budget so that we can look at how that's going to affect and make any adjustments needed. No adjustments may be needed. We may gavel back in and say, no, this is unfortunate, but it is what it is and gavel back out. Or we may go back for a couple of weeks to try and adjust things. Basically, an earlier budget adjustment than what we normally do. And I could dive into education, but I also want everyone to go home before midnight after answering questions about education reform. But the word version is the legislature will reconvene on June 16 to continue the conversations about education reform because by the time we hit 11 o'clock on Friday, there was nearly a riot. We all wanted to get out of there at 11:30, a little before midnight. And we all strongly felt that passing one of the biggest reforms that building has done in 30 years was not the kind of thing to be done at 2:00 a.m. on a Saturday. So everyone is going home, taking a breath, taking some space. Sometimes that's the best thing to be done with negotiations. And we will all reconvene on June 16 to continue the education transformation conversation. And happy to answer any more questions about that, but don't want to monopolize any more time than I already have.
Questions? Counselor Derry?
We talked recently about municipalities getting a share back of the local options tax. Is Berry going to receive any of that?
Yes, yes. So it's, all towns right now receive 70-30 and all towns will be going to 75.
Right.
And that will be in perpetuity.
We talked about a surplus last time based on the state fund.
Oh, yes, the pilot fund surplus, yeah.
That we might see a rebate or refund back because of that?
That did not happen in this legislation. We basically, so what Counselor Derry is referring to is the local options tax revenue that goes to the state is put in what's called the pilot fund, the Payment in lieu of Taxes Fund that pays property taxes for state-owned buildings. There is a significant, around $10 million surplus in that fund because we're bringing in more money than we needed. The legislature felt that changing both sides of that equation at once could lead to a little instability. So we basically decided to tackle the local options tax side of the formula this year. And next year, one of our biggest agenda items will be the pilot fund because there are also representatives from municipalities who have a lot. We don't have that much, we have some state-owned property in Berry, but not as much as Waterbury, which has the whole state hospital complex.
Right.
There are many towns that feel that they are not getting enough money in pilot payments. And we just did not have time to dive into that issue this year. So next year, we're going to be looking at the structure of the pilot fund, figuring out if people are getting their fair shake. And then once we have that conversation, we'll figure out what to do with that surplus that's there. So it's been talked about, but it was not decided this year.
So essentially, it's just going to sit in a fund? It's not being allocated to anything?
No, it's not being spent.
Okay. That, I guess that answered my question. Thanks, Teddy.
Yes?
I just wanted to speak, I've been following all of the flood legislation and its various, many iterations over the course of this session pretty closely because obviously, this is a topic of keen interest to me. And I just want to speak to like the enormity of what Counselor Wazizak has been able to do through starting, excuse me, whoa, I did it too. Representative Wazizak.
I would not want to be both.
Has been able to do through, starting from a big omnibus bill and then finding places for all of the pieces of that bill to ferret away amongst other legislation and still getting some piece of the omnibus bill across the finish line is pretty remarkable. And there's some really, even beyond some of the things he discussed tonight, there's some things that are genuinely going to make flood resiliency statewide better because that legislation passed. So it was an incredible accomplishment and some really, really good things. So, thank you.
And I will also add to what Counselor Guston just, 397, when it was first introduced, had a bunch of stuff that ended up in the budget and a bunch of stuff in transparency that did not pass. For example, we've talked about the flood fleets in past years of, you know, getting some vectors purchased by the state that they can send out. That did not move this year. But per Representative Booton's earlier point of we have an entire, another year to go in 2026. So my intention with everything that did not make it over the finish line this year, including one of my, oh, I made, I made the environment committee very grumpy, being able to redevelop in a flood resilient way in buyout properties. We know that there are some areas where that absolutely should not happen. And we know that there are some areas where that could happen, such as River Street, especially here in Berry. And that was not successful in moving this year. We successfully got buyouts put in statute, but there is still that provision that says it has to be green space forever. So one of my projects next year, among the flood fleet, et cetera, will be to provide some sort of process for an exemption to that for areas where it makes sense. Because I think that we've also learned over the past couple of years of floods, hard and fast rules that are not responsive to on-the-ground situations just do not work for our long-term flood resiliency. We need to be able to find ways to create flexible exceptions where they make sense. And I've had some conversations with the Secretary of the United States about that as well. So, yeah.
Anything else? Just wanted to say thank you. I mean, there were parts of it that were fun. I mean, I would.
Oh, I had a blast. I had an absolute blast, let me be clear.
I would get calls in the evening about Representative Booton or Representative Wazizak. And I would just tell, I would just, from other legislators, and I would just tell, I don't know what you guys are going to do next year because what I would say to them is, you know what they did? And I'd say, yeah, they kind of did exactly what I asked them to do. I said, but they're freshman legislators, they don't know any better. So I don't know what you're going to use as an excuse next year, but you were both effective. So thank you for that. I mean, it was a good, for the city of Berry, for flood-impacted communities, certainly, it was, it was a really, it was a really good session. You know, like I alluded to, and I'm sorry for popping off a little bit, the two of you did a great job with the wetlands provisions that we were looking to get moved in. I mean, we had that, we had that battle won. And then there was a cheap shot at the end. I mean, yeah, people are going to hear about it. And, but you two did a great job. They would have been really useful up on Prospect Heights. We would have been able to build more housing. You know, now we can't. Now we'll have, I mean, we're still happy to have up to 80-ish.
Yes, 70.
Units up there, but it would have been nice to be able to create, you know, 95 or 96 to house more of our neighbors. H91, I got to admit, Teddy, I'm, Representative Wazizak, I'm on the fence on that one. My biggest concern, and I've shared this with the administration, don't hand any municipality a $5 million problem and give us $1 million to deal with it. I don't know if the regional approach is going to work. You know, you and I have talked about this. I'm just concerned that we've got these five agencies that are good at what they do and they're respected, but now they're going to be competing with each other.
And they're.
You know, everybody has to stand up an entire administrative staff. So, okay, so Capstone is going to be competing with an agency in Newport. And it feels a little to me like the state is just.
Which, which.
And they had the, I mean, they had a program that we all agreed. You know, it was funded to the max during COVID. We all know it's not sustainable. We all understand that there are problems with it, but we had it set up. You know, why didn't we just, I don't understand why we just didn't work with the program we have and make it better. And now all we've done is create, okay, so now instead of five people to deal with, we've got, you know, one person to deal with or one agency, we've got five. And you and I have had this discussion. My biggest concern, when you have five agencies competing against each other, all doing the same thing, somebody's going to be the worst one. So the folks who aren't going to get served, I sure hope, I don't think it would ever be Capstone. They're pretty high performers. But what about another agency? So if you happen to be a unhoused Vermonter who lives in this area and that agency is a poor performer, you're going to go without, you know, it's, it's the opposite of what we did with neighborhood schools. We combined them so that everybody got the same opportunity. So I'm sorry, I'll get off my soapbox.
No, and you know.
But, you know, so I don't know about that one. Education reform, House doesn't agree with the Senate, Senate doesn't agree with the governor, governor does agree with the House. Good luck with that one. I don't know where that goes.
So a couple of things on H91. I completely agree with the, what I'll call red flags that you are raising, the ways this could potentially go wrong. I will say that there was a concerted, you know, with all due respect to the administration, the administration believed that pushing it from the state level to the regional level was the right move. And there was an unwillingness, I think, to, to keep it as a state program because of the costs. And I think that, you know, I'm a good Democrat, I love a good government program and I would have much preferred to see it remain as a state-run program. But that was a fight that was lost for many reasons. And again, the only reason I voted for H91 is because there is some money in there for our munis. And then on the education transformation, I will actually say, you know, the administration, as someone who's on Ways and Means, I had direct jurisdiction over the education transformation bill. And while we disagreed with the administration very often on whatever they were proposing, they were very clear about what they wanted and when they wanted it. And that was not true of the Vermont State Senate. They just were not able to put together a plan that 50% plus one of senators agreed on. So the Senate basically passed our, they basically passed the House version of the bill, wanted to argue it out in conference committee. We did conference committee for four days and then at 3:00 p.m. on Friday, the day we were supposed to have a deal, the Vermont State Senate brought out an entirely new proposal that neither the administration nor the governor had ever seen before, Friday at 3:00 p.m. And so we decided, you know, this is too important to either pass stuff that we don't know what's happening or force this thing through at 2:00 a.m. So we decided that the best thing to do would be to everyone go home for two weeks, touch some grass, as I like to say, go talk to your school, go talk to your principal, go talk to your school board and go back in two weeks. So, you know, it's, I've certainly had my criticisms of the governor and the administration in the past, but even though we've disagreed on some stuff, they've been a very working partner in terms of this negotiation. And unfortunately, it's the Senate that sort of blew things up at the last minute. And just to, I would have voted, even had it gone out of conference committee, I would have voted no on the Senate version because it would have increased taxes in Berry City by 22% over the coming years. Absolutely not. It also would have allowed our students to fall further behind than they already are. We have some of the lowest per pupil spending in the state and some of the highest tax burden. And that's just not a dynamic that's working for our kids, for our taxpayers or for our community. So I, you know, thanked, because this, we were asked to vote on the bill and the Speaker of the House, Jill Kerwin, he said, no, we won't take a bad deal. And that's what happened when we went home late on Friday night is, no deal was better than a bad deal and we were being offered a bad deal. So we will go back in two weeks and we will, I will not vote for any bill that's not a good deal for both our students and our taxpayers.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, let's see, you're going back in two weeks, so we'll see you in a month. I think it's going to take two weeks.
Yeah, and we don't, and we don't know, you know, it's, we also, it's important, we had previously scheduled the 16th and 17th as legislative days in the event that the governor vetoed anything that we would have to go back and address. So it also just sort of made, it gave everyone time and we were already scheduled to go back on the 16th anyway. But to your point, we don't know. It could take two days. 16th anyway. But to your point, we don't know. It could take two days, it could take two weeks. We could be there through August. We just don't know right now. But we are, at least on the House side, we are very committed. We're not going to do this right, fast and wrong. We're going to take our time and make sure that we get it right for the kids and for the taxpayers of Berry City, because that is the most important thing at the other end of this.
Thank you again.
Cool. Thank you.
Counsel, we'll move on to item 8E on the agenda. This is the Flood Resiliency Plan Update. Counsel Augustine?
All right. You had the presentation in your packet, because there's a fair bit here. If you could go to our first slide. Okay. So I started off with what the goal is to do tonight. Review the status of the pieces of the existing plan that was adopted in November 2024. Based on our previous conversations, we've had some really good substantive conversations about what does finished look like, what does in progress look like, and all these things like that. I've picked out suggested projects to describe as completed, or in some cases say, okay, we did what we described, let's consider changing it. And then also based on suggestions, review projects to move from future. There's a, was a sort of holding pattern of future projects in the plan to move into the main body of the plan, which means they will get regular council updates and extra focus and attention and so on. And as we'll see when we get to that portion, there are also some pieces that sort of leapfrogged the future project section, which we can always do. And then at the very end, again, based on past conversations, and once again, fine tooth comb over all of various city plans, I've proposed some additions to that future projects list. So we'll go through all of those things. And my goal at the end of this conversation is to come away with sort of council feedback in order to sort of rewrite the existing plan to present a new updated plan for adoption at the June 17 meeting, sort of based on if council greenlights pieces of these or asks for tweaks to some of what I have put together this evening. So if you could go to our first. Okay. Overall progress. There are 21 projects outlined in the Flood Resiliency Plan. Based on the criteria we have sort of described and talked about, I believe, I have set nine as completed or substantially completed, seven as substantially underway. We've made major progress on them. Three have seen some progress, and two have seen no progress updates. And I'll describe what that means when we get to that slide. That doesn't mean that nothing is happening on these. It just means we haven't heard about them as council. Nothing has risen to the level of major progress upgraded at council levels. And I'll talk about that when we get to that slide. Okay, here's the list of completed or substantially completed. Please note, this does not necessarily mean they will be removed from the plan. We'll talk about that in a minute. But citywide inundation modeling, we have funded that, and we're just waiting on delivery of the report. Stormwater system analysis and upsizing. We have funded the stormwater system analysis, and we're waiting on the report. We'll talk in a minute about the upsizing part of that goal. That's a little bit later on. Citizen-led neighborhood flood knowledge. We did some really great neighborhood walks in March of 2025. So we've checked that box. Resident education, we did a phenomenal series of workshops in April and May of 2025. Continued investment in city staff. This is another one where the described pieces in the original flood plan were completed this fall. This one is up for suggested revision, and we'll talk about that in a minute. But the pieces that were described in the flood plan, we checked the box on. Funding opportunities for community building, we checked that box. When council allocated $2,500 to the Parks and Rec Committee to prepare grant applications for small community gatherings. Remove the railroad trestle. Honestly, I thought this would be in the plan for the next five years, but it's gone. So check. And I actually forgot to update that slide. Will it be completed summer 2025? Was completed spring 2025. Seminary Street parking lot development, as we have talked about tonight, we are still on the right track for that one to break ground in the spring of 2026. And the Housing Revolving Loan Fund, we allocated funding and worked with Downstreet Housing to develop the parameters of that loan fund. I do still want to do an update on that one and see how that's going in the future, but we created the fund, which was the, the goal of the plan. Before we go, do I have any questions on any of those? That's our nine projects that I have described as completed or substantially completed. Okay, next, please. Thank you. Substantially underway, communications upgrades. We are continuing to roll out regroup. Every time I get a text, I think Nicholas really, really enjoys sending out those updates. It's been, it's been good so far. We handed out regroup signup instructions at all of the neighborhood walks. We had them at all of the community education workshops this spring. I just have a stack that I travel with at this point. And I'll talk in a minute, but we have some more opportunities to continue to onboard folks to that system. So substantially underway, more room to keep going. Relocate the DPW garage out of the floodplain, also substantially underway. Our next steps in that are to do final permitting in summer and fall of 2025 to look at being there next year. So in a year from now, maybe we will cross that one off. Upgrade the Berry auditorium, as we got, as we heard over the course of our application, excuse me, of our updates, we got $500, $500,000 in grant funding for upgrades to partially work on that existing earmarked grant, but we still have work to do. We still got a ways to go on both that grant and on the upgrades of the auditorium. And that is included as a reminder for folks in, it's included in the plan because it is the regional emergency shelter and needs substantial upgrades. For subbuyouts for floodplain, that 12 is probably changed. I kept trying to update that as Nicholas was giving updates, but we are moving forward to pursue buyouts for floodplain. There's also been.
The Berlin Street Bridge.
I'm sorry. I'll skip back to that in just a second here. Right, thank you. Pursue buyouts for floodplain, 12 projects in properties and approval. We are continuing on that. There have been some really phenomenal community conversations happening recently about what the, after the, the structures are removed, what that floodplain could look like as a green space for the city. So those are underway and in progress back up to resolve the Berlin Street Bridge, which is what the plan calls for. The council has approved the submission of a hazard mitigation grant for removal of that Berlin Street Bridge. So that is on its way.
Excuse me?
Yes.
So why does it have to be so blatant that they're going to remove the Berlin Bridge? Can it be, can we apply for money to fix it?
So what council has already approved? So this is an update on an action council has already taken, which is to approve the hazard mitigation grant when the river scientist folks came to us, and river is standing for the R-I-V-E-R. I forget what it stands for. It's an acronym that scientists were sent to deeply flood affected communities to work with their municipal bodies and look for projects to apply for hazard mitigation grants and then provide them support. In order to do that, they made us a list of, it was like 65 projects that we could do. And then council worked together to grade them based on their advice for projects that would make sense to move forward. And removing the Berlin Street Bridge was near the top of their list every single time. So they presented modeling to say that removal would, removal is what would most substantially affect flood resiliency in that area, and that it could not be replaced because of the location of the bridge, because of the narrowness of the channel there, the location of the railroad tracks. And the current and existing design of the bridge cannot be fixed. It cannot be changed into a new or quote unquote, better design. So it was the scientists' recommendation at that time that we apply for a grant for removal of the bridge. So that is an action, we have already applied for that grant based on their scientific recommendations. We still have not officially heard on whether that is moving forward or not, and there will still be a great deal of design work. Once we get information back about that, I was talking to one of the principals who was part of that at our Winuski River meeting a couple of weeks ago. He said that they, they have added, per resident request, they have added a traffic study for that area to make sure that when the bridge, if this many comes through, if the bridge is removed, that there would be an understanding of how it would affect traffic pattern in that area and a planning for that as part of this process. That was a long recap, and other councillors were there along this as well.
Applying a grant, receiving a grant, and accepting a grant are three different required actions of the city council.
So we can.
We have not, and I believe it was you, I think it was you, ma'am, who was here at an earlier meeting. And what I told you is that prior to, is that the city council hasn't made the decision to remove the Berlin Street Bridge. What we did is we applied for a grant.
That's what I want.
Because we recognize that we don't have millions of dollars to allocate towards the removal of the Berlin, Berlin Street Bridge. We haven't really, we haven't allocated a whole lot of time towards whether we remove the bridge or not, simply because we don't have that option right now. We don't have the money. If we receive the grant, then we'll have the discussion, then we'll have a public hearing, then we'll have a vote at the council.
So the update right now describes what has happened.
We absolutely, absolutely.
We came in kind of late on this, you know, being just elected, but so.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a couple of questions on that.
Well, no, we haven't decided to remove the Berlin Street Bridge. Go ahead. You're here. I'll give you the opportunity, but.
Could you come up to the table, please?
I just want to have like 500 people that assign my petition.
Yeah.
And there's more than one of them.
Yeah.
And as you addressed, the last time that I was here, you're going by what the scientists say.
Right.
Which is fine. My other question is, that being a federal bridge, I have two questions. That being a federal bridge, if you tear that down, will you not have to pay the feds back for that because they built it?
I don't know that it is a federal bridge.
I thought the feds went through and painted and did all these bridges at one time.
Yeah, that was, that was long before my time. I don't know. And again, those are all questions that we have to answer. Those are all, those are all questions that we'll need to answer, ma'am, prior to making a decision.
Oh, okay. And my other question was, a lot of it's manmade. So how does the environmental laws get involved with it?
The environment?
This river is like kind of manmade. I mean, they pulled it from where it used to be and put it where it is now. And I'm just wondering how that.
Yeah, again, those are, I mean, in terms of the river channel itself, if, if we're fortunate enough to reach, to find ourselves in a position to receive the grant, and we have, we will, and we have that discussion about the possible removal of the bridge, we'll have river scientists come in and they'll talk to us about how it would benefit the city, how it would mitigate flooding efforts in the North End. That's all. We'll listen to residents, as I promised you. Folks who want to come and say, look, how is a firetruck going to get to my house? I mean, that's part of the traffic study. So if we get to that point, we'll absolutely give people the opportunity to be heard.
And part of the rule of the bridges, because it's a catchall, is that, is that was the biggest area?
Primarily.
Because it didn't catch any water flood in our place.
Primarily.
I can tell you that.
Yeah, it's, it's the debris as the, as the river scientists have spoken to the council, it's the height of the bridge. The bridge is so low that debris tend to, tends to catch under it.
But it's a third time they built it.
So it didn't slow the water down from coming onto our property.
It's the third time they built that bridge. It just wasn't built properly.
The ground needs to be lowered instead of the bridge.
Yeah. I mean, listen, I understand that.
But that's another time.
I understand that a lot of people have a lot of opinions and a lot of concerns, and we will absolutely give them the opportunity to be heard before we make a decision.
Well, one person had said that, if you reroute it to go around by Beveridge Baron, you know, only one car at a time can fit on that road. With that big sidewalk and that big blank path that nobody uses.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah. All things to be considered.
I do just.
All right, Roy.
Well, I do just want to add too that part of what is going to inform the planning of that is the inundation modeling study that we commissioned last fall. Those will sort of happen at the same time. So we will have a complete inundation modeling of the entire city that will tell us how the water moves throughout the entire city, that will help inform the actual execution of those grants. There are two grants, Willie Street. There was a brief time where that line also included Willie Street. That's off the plan now, but the hazard mitigation grant for that is going forward as well. Talk about that separately if we need to. To last my place, Prospect Heights Development. Infrastructure, as Representative Wazazak shared tonight, we are now at 75% funding. Is my math correct on that, Mayor? We are at 75% funded of the infrastructure, and the due diligence study is expected this summer. That will move us further along that process. We continue to work on that. And housing flood mitigation, three elevation grants have been approved. Council was part of that process for setting the criteria. Obviously, a great deal more work to do on that goal, because that goal is all about making houses more flood resilient going forward. So those are all considered substantially underway, or there's been major progress made on them. Next, please. Some progress. Infill development, and we'll address this in a little bit, infill developments in two spots. I don't know why, how that got passed. We're going to fix it. CVRPC has completed a study. We heard about that at council. It's phenomenal. We're going to talk about it some more at the Housing Task Force tomorrow night. But there hasn't yet been any real movement forward on that infill study, no outreach around that yet. So there's a great deal more work to, to go on the infill section. Investigating flood impacts outside city limits. There's also an enormous amount of work to be done on, on this goal. This one is like, we've only made some progress on it, not because we haven't been doing things, but because there is just a truly enormous amount of work and conversation that has to happen across the entire Winuski River watershed and the entire region. We have talked in previous meetings of council how various amounts of stuff have been going to the Winuski River Resiliency Collaborative, I'm going to just give it a different name every time I say it. River Collaborative, they have been really good regional conversations. Friends of the Winuski River have an active RFP out for, from a removal of three dams that are upriver of Berry City and that will affect Berry City. So those are actively going underway. I'm hoping we can get them when that work actually starts and moves forward. I'm hoping we can get them to come in and talk about their work around that. But that's a truly enormous goal, and we're just going to keep chipping away at that one. But we've only made some small progress on that. Any questions on those before we, okay. And then no progress updates. I say no progress updates because each of these has, things are happening with both of these. We just haven't had official updates at council. On ward meetings and street captains, we've had some phenomenal sort of just like offline conversations about those. And knock on some wood, might have some grant support for that coming. We'll update council if that actually goes anywhere. And then the River Access Task Force has, as always, been doing phenomenal work. We just haven't had them in to do a full and thorough, what can council do to help support your strategic plan and, and your work conversation? So they haven't gotten a full status update at a meeting. So there are things happening on both of those goals, but in full, like transparency, I had to rank them both as neither of them have seen official updates. Any questions on the sort of, so that's 20, that's all 21 goals of the current existing plan and sort of where they stand. And now we can, if there are no questions, move into, okay. All right. So when we talked about this at council last, there was some, I think, totally understandable reticence about moving projects. There's, there's sort of two things. There's projects that, yes, they are, they're done. We did them. The trestle, it's gone. And then there are some projects that, like, we have basically completed them, but we just need to keep checking in to make sure they get across the finish line. And we may need to reserve the right to like pull them back out of hibernation or whatever and check in on them. So what I'm proposing is that these five, these five projects out of the main plan move into a completion slash check-in stage, which means that, and I will take responsibility for this as the sort of like owner of the plan, that if any of these go off the rails metaphorically, we will pull them back. And of course, by that, I mean, the Seminary Street Parking Lot is probably the most signal example of that. Like, we've still got about a year before they actually break ground on that. We're making really, really good progress. We've done pretty much most of the pieces. I'm proposing to move it into completed check-in. But if in November, we're here again at our next six month update, and we're like, we should not have done that. That's top of my mind for yanking back out. Similarly, the Housing Revolving Loan Fund, I do still want an update for that. If it's not working for whatever reason, that, nothing is permanent in this plan, is what I'm saying. Like, we can pull out. But these are the ones I'm suggesting we move from actively. We get updates all the time in that part of the plan. Any feedback or questions about that? Okay, so that moves five of the 21. The next is, there are five goals that I'm suggesting we change, because each goal has sort of sub-language around it. There's a top line goal, and then there's language describing exactly what we mean by that goal. Each of these, I'm suggesting we keep. Each of these, I'm suggesting we keep, oh no, did I, okay, I screwed up the first one slightly, I'll talk about it in a second. Each of these, I am suggesting we keep in the plan, but adjust what we mean by them slightly. The first is, I just said earlier, stormwater system analysis and upsizing. We have funded the analysis study, so that is underway, but we have not done any of the upsizing yet. Right? We haven't looked at the culvert and said, that culvert needs to be replaced, or this, that, or the other thing. In a mid, in a little bit later slide, I substantially rewrote this, so I'm going to describe that in a second. Infill development. Like I said, I don't know how to end up in two places, it's in two places. I'm just going to propose moving it to one, combining the two current infill development ones and putting it under the housing section of the plan, which is the fourth. Resident education. We did what we said we would do in the plan. I would like to sort of update the, the language to say, we're going to keep going with different topics as suggested by residents, make sure we have ongoing and regular workshops. People are, I literally have a page full of ideas people have already given me for things they want to see in the future about workshops. That's going really well. I think we should just keep it and change the goal of it slightly. Citizen-led neighborhood knowledge. I think we should keep this, but I think this is a council conversation. Does it look like the same thing, or are there more things we can do? What this looked like this year was five neighborhood walks, where people talked about what they saw on just their street, or two streets in some cases, during flooding, how water moves, talked about sort of what they saw, how they felt about their neighborhood, and all things like that. Do we want to just keep going with that? Are there different things that, that council thinks we could do with this? The overall goal is to say, people who live in their neighborhoods know best how water moves in their neighborhoods and what their neighborhood needs to be resilient on the street, individual street level. So how do we incorporate that feedback into our overall planning? So I toss that out. Are there any suggestions for change? Just keep doing what we're doing?
Well, we did the walks.
Yep.
Thankfully, none of our neighborhoods have had to really observe how water is moving through their neighborhood, because we just haven't experienced those conditions. We could give people another opportunity and say, look, we're going to do another neighborhood walk, and here's why.
Five more streets.
Maybe, yeah, maybe you, you know, the weather's getting warmer and nicer, and maybe you missed the first one, but we're going to do this again and give you a second bite at the apple, so. Yes.
Tess Taylor, Housing and Homelessness, for the city of Berry. I just, having gone on those walks and seeing what we were able to glean, along with conversations that we had a year and a half ago with the people in the different wards, when we asked them to map there, I think to continue with doing it in different areas than we just did it, is going to help us gather more data and mapping for what is happening, because it's so different than it was 10 years ago. People are always telling us now, they're seeing stuff that they never saw before. And if we can get this data down and, and map it, it'll be helpful for any kind of future studies. So that's just my two cents on that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes.
I, I am in support of the walks. I think those are great tools. I also think, as we briefly discussed last week, that there should be an opportunity for people to be able to give you what they know, but not have to go on the walk. And the only reason I say that is, you know, if they have a conflict, if, you know, they broke their leg in, or on crutches and can't go on the walk, whatever. But they may have knowledge that's really important. They may have lived there their whole, you know, they may have, you know, been there for 25 years and realized, you know, yeah, this has changed a lot. And we think it's this, you know, this thing that happened that has changed, and this is, but if we don't put it out there, and I don't know if that looks like a survey, I don't know if it looks like some kind of Google Doc, or you like, different neighborhoods, maybe there, maybe that's how we can sort of incorporate, like, a neighborhood meeting, and then they sit down and, I don't know, but I'm, I just think that there should be a way for us to get more people involved than just the people who are physically able to walk around.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ponder that.
Lisa Leori, yeah, did, question or comment?
Yeah, I recall after the flood of 2023, we had the large ward meetings where they were all really well-attended, and I think we broke into groups and we had maps of the ward, and we all went through and marked on those maps on our streets and what we observed. And is that data incorporated in all of this? Because it feels like so many people participated in those meetings, that would be a great go-to. And I guess I'm kind of confused why we're doing neighborhood walks when so many people participated in that already. Thank you.
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to speak to that. So the data that was collected as part of those ward meetings, which were before my time on council, was collected and was shared with the city at the time. I was not on the inside for that, and that was done at, you know, in some of the ways that Council Spalding was just suggested, at tables around maps. I was in one of the small groups for Ward Two, and I scribed for Ward Three and so on. The, the goal behind the walks is just a different way of getting at a same thing, a different way of giving people a voice within their own neighborhoods. They were, were always intended to be complementary paths. What we did on the, on the walks, and anyone else who was there can, can speak to their experience of them as well, but we literally just walked at a snail's pace down the street, had conversations about what people saw. People pointed, oh, that storm drain, more than any other, was spitting water back. I think something's broken underneath it. So I would make a note on, on the maps I was carrying. We walked up and down the area around West Patterson and really looked and, and tried to understand that, and talked to some folks who had a garden on the corner, who said, oh, our, our rain garden was, was part of what helped save our property, because it helped, you know, trap and divert the water. So they were just intended as different ways for folks to interact, and, and different comfort levels, different hands-on levels, to gather similar information. I feel that there is a ton of inform, there's, there's always going to be more feedback and more neighborhood knowledge and more data that we can gather in that way. We've just got to figure out different ways to keep, to keep getting it per Council Spaldings.
So, so is all of this information being aggregated somewhere? Do we have that data from those first ward meetings? And is that, is that being accumulated and all put together going towards this goal? Or what happened to that data from two years ago?
So I was not on council, and I was not on the inside then, I was only scribing and passing it along, so I can't speak to that, but I, I've seen Tess Taylor nodding to me that that information was collected and was shared back. What I can speak to is the neighborhood flood walks. Part of the grant that we wrote, which is a grant from the Vermont Community Council on Rural Development's Climate Catalyst Program, part of the grant that we wrote into that was using the CVRPC, the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission, as a partner in that process, and that we would take the data we gathered from the walks and work with them on finding a way to capture that through GIS systems, so that we would build an ongoing repository of the information for that. And I see the, Tess, her hand raised.
I just, I'm just hearing the concern of what.
Tess, do you come up to the microphone? Sorry, thank you. Otherwise, I'll hear it in the comments.
The original data, or the data from the original meetings, it has been collected, it, and I turned it over to CVRPC as they were doing the infill study, so they have, they have it as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Amy Galford?
Hey, yeah, I just wanted to note that I'm glad to see this as an ongoing topic, because there was a lot of public participation in 2023 and 2024, but I think a lot of that was really very raw reaction to the flood. A lot of it was figuring out how to deal with FEMA and a lot of immediate response to it. And, and there was a lot of good brainstorming out of all of that, but it seems like things are in a very different phase when we're getting down to the specifics of, this thing is going to happen to this particular bridge, this housing development is going to go in this particular place. And so a lot has changed since there, so I think it does need to be something ongoing. If you're wanting reactions to the more specific proposals we have, or there are some things that might have been on the table that people were talking about a couple of years ago that for one reason or another are not, like, you know, depending on the pattern of actual buyout applicants, some things that were being brainstormed about a couple of years ago just aren't going to happen, because those buyouts didn't happen in those particular areas. So I think it is something to revisit, because the, all the plans and the proposals and the funding has changed and in some cases gotten more specific to particular neighborhoods. And I think, I think it needs to not be, you know, it does need to be neighborhood, more like the 20-odd neighborhoods in the city plan, not wards. Like, Ward Three is a very diverse ward geographically in terms of, of flooding and, and other things. So I think rather than it being ward-focused, it really does need to be neighborhoods or clusters of neighbors.
Yeah. Thank you. And, and when we did these neighborhood walks, they were truly just like one street. It was like five, six blocks of one street. We were really like walking at a crawl along the whole, the whole street. So I think that for it to be successful and for it to be really substantive conversations, we would have to do something like that going forward. So I want to just recap what I'm hearing, which is, continue on, the, that the, the walks were good, we could look at them in different streets, especially, some of those were really cold. So summer will be great. We could find other ways and start to broaden this goal out and start to brainstorm other ways. People can share it with walks. And because the flood updates have been coming fast and furious, we haven't updated council on those neighborhood walks, really, other than telling people they were going to happen. So I will make a personal note as part of this summer, when we recap what we did this spring, and maybe, maybe announce a new round of them, we'll maybe have some from CVRPC, or at least present and talk about how they're capturing this data for us to answer some of those questions. Does that sound like a fair recap of? Okay. All right, last suggested for change, there was a goal called Continued Investment in City Staff. It had named a couple of specific things that we checked the box for. I had a conversation with the city manager about, you know, I don't want to put something about city staff in the flood resiliency plan without having a conversation, and the proposal is to, excuse me, change the language in that, to affirm a city commitment to ensuring staff capacity for projects as part of seeking funding. What I mean by that is, you know, we've been talking a lot about CDPG funding in particular, but we're going to be looking at large funding opportunities for many years to come, and that is a, a commitment to writing in the staff capacity that we need to do those projects into the funding requests. That's going to mean everything from making sure that perhaps a, a staff member has dedicated capacity to that project, or it could potentially mean hiring new staff as part of that project as long as the funding is included in that funding request. I don't know if the manager wants to.
No, it's terrific, yeah.
Okay, so it's just make, make sure we affirm our commitment to understanding that our city staff work extremely hard and are already at capacity, and that we have a lot of work to do, and we need to keep finding ways to keep them at capacity and not overcapacity. Okay, now we're into actually suggestions, made more, larger suggestions for change. This is the description, this is the stormwater one that I suggested, I said we're going to change pretty substantially. So the, it's now proposed, I'm proposing it now to be, develop a plan for upsizing and maintenance of stormwater systems throughout the city. Identify any capacity issues in regular maintenance and work to improvement. That could mean a whole host of things, potentially. Build and adopt a storm drain program that empowers residents to care for their own neighborhoods. So under each of these new goals, I've listed where they came from. This is a continuation of the existing plan segment, as we described before. I'm proposing to move it from information and data gathering to infrastructure and flood mitigation, because it's no longer just gathering information, it's actually doing things. It's going to build, it will build on the stormwater system analysis that the city has commissioned already, and stormwater system maintenance and citizen involvement were named in the 2020 Berry City Municipal Plan under the Community Services and Amenities section. So this is in an existing city plan. As we're doing the current plan, I try to look for everywhere that these goals were already called out in existing plans. Next, please. Okay. Suggested for inclusion. This is a new goal. Develop a north-end master plan. The north end of Berry has been the hardest-hit neighborhood over both 2023 and 2024, and needs a resident-centered plan that will guide redevelopment and flood mitigation. This builds on the ward meetings from January in 2024 that were discussed before, and the goal would be that, I think we were hoping, we've talked about this at council meeting a few times, work would begin this summer to start to have a specific plan just for the north end to see what that might look like in a more flood-resilient way. Suggested for inclusion. Improve emergency access to the public safety building. When Main Street floods, city emergency vehicles can't leave the building. The city should pursue easements and property purchases to ensure an emergency right of way. This was named in the 2024 Berry City Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, and this was also on the River Project Priority List, that big, long list of projects that they came to us having identified. Next. Thank you. Suggested for inclusion. Explore strategic riverbed maintenance. The city should thoroughly investigate circumstances in which strategic removal of riverbed sediment will benefit flood resiliency and generally find opportunities for education about the science of sediment management. This was named in the 2024 Berry City Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, in the River Project Priority List, and by residents in both the forums and the ward meetings. This also came up at council previously. The goal will be to make sure people understand what the city is already doing, really thoroughly talk about this. This is, this is my water table goal. Really, I really wanted to find a way to work the water table we talked about. I now have three different emails offering me three different water tables, so it is definitely going to happen. So this, this goal will provide opportunities for education about what we are doing, what we could do, what it's smart to do, and, and all of that. Next. Resolve Courier Park and Potash Brook flooding. The city should proc, excuse, the city should pursue a comprehensive solution to the channelized Potash Brook as it runs through Courier Park, rebuilding that channel, developing floodplain, expansion options, and better protecting residents in that area. This was named in the River Project Priority List in a couple of places, actually. They had like three or four different projects that all basically circled around improving the flood resiliency of that area, including floodplain restoration at Jefferson Street, installing debris catchers on Delmont Street, and that drops off, I'm sorry, the other floodplain restoration is up by Nelson Street, is the third Pete River project list that was included, so. Develop lobby park for housing. This is pulled out of the future projects list. The city has negotiated an option with Downstreet Housing and Community Development to support the development of housing in that location, but there is a whole lot of envisioning and work to be done to make that possible. This is a project that was put forward and described in the November 2024 EPA Community Change Grant, which was not funded, but the good news is that now we have a described project and an existing partnership with Downstreet that we can continue to pursue as an additional housing project and a flood-resilient housing project. Suggested for inclusion. Focus on abandoned and derelict structures. The city can consider whether to increase penalties for abandoned or derelict structures and find ways to reroute those structures towards more productive use. This was named in the 2020 Berry City Municipal Plan under Economic Development and Housing, and I should have also added, it has certainly been a topic of conversation at council in recent months. All right, that, I want to hit pause before I move on to the future projects, because I just named six new things to move into the plan, and I went through them quickly. Any comments, feedback, anything on the pieces I just suggested?
Councilor Deere?
Selective riverbed maintenance. Love it. I think that's one of the huge things that people are talking about, really just, you know, the history of, of it is really eluding many. I think it would be helpful to, to really get a good historical perspective of it, of what we used to do, who used to do it, how we used to do it, all those things, because it's really important that, that many in our community have really kind of forgotten about our history, and without using our history, it could be a positive or a negative. And, you know, there's a reason that things haven't been done, and we really need to get to the bottom of why they haven't been done. You know, what didn't work, what worked? And for many in our communities, not just here in Berry, but in the surrounding areas, feel like, you know, selective riverbed maintenance, using that new term instead of dredging, is vital, and we need to get back to that. So I really look forward to that conversation, to, to really kind of get everybody's voice out on the table, so we can collectively get done what needs to get done here in Berry. Thank you for bringing all that in.
Great. Yeah.
Okay, here are just a couple of suggestions that are, and remember, the future projects is just like the future holding bin, so I'm suggesting these to move into future projects. We can move them forward in November if we keep at this pace. If we keep at this pace, we're going to have to brainstorm more future projects because I'm going to run out soon. Suggested for future projects. Green infrastructure and traffic calming. Pursue streetscape improvements that will help manage stormwater runoff and function doubly for traffic calming. Install a river gauge on the Stevens Branch. As council, wow, did it again. Representative Wazasak said tonight, VEM now has to help us do that. Plan for annual upkeep for better prediction and planning. Pulled this one out of, oh shoot, I forget which. I think it was the local hazard mitigation plan. Floodplain restoration at Spalding High School was a pitch. Lower athletic fields as debris and water overflow. They do this in Waterbury, right? They lowered all of those athletic fields and it kind of stinks that you lose the athletic fields for a little while, but if it substantially improves your flood outlook, that might be an interesting option to explore. This was identified as, as a potential project. And then this, this feels like a little one, but it was on the list. So upsize city hall generator. Get a bigger city hall generator so that if we need to use this as a hub for emergency planning or anything like that, they have power. Are there any other future projects that folks want to see on that list?
Not a future project, but circling back to the upsizing and maintenance of the stormwater systems throughout the city. Could we work into their restoration as well?
What do you mean by that?
Well, I mean, the whole reason we don't know, that's the whole reason we're having the analysis, the inventorying of our stormwater system done. You know, we're inventorying it and we're assessing the condition. We suspect pretty strongly that there are some sections of the system that have simply failed. They're not functioning, they're either functioning at a very low level or not functioning at all, which is why we get some of the overflow and then the scouring. So, so I think if we're going to look at upsizing and maintenance, and I don't disagree with any of that, I think first we have to look at restoration, you know, prioritize restoration of areas that have just failed. They're not working at all.
So it's a comprehensive, you know, analysis.
Yeah, a comprehensive plan, what, you know, based upon, based upon the analysis and assessment of condition, what are the priorities? And one of the biggest concerns I have about that, if you upsize all of our storm systems, they all go to one place. They all go to Stevens Branch. So, you know, no, and listen, you know, some neighborhoods could certainly benefit, but we might be sending water, you know, if the Stevens Branch can't accept any more water, we've seen this. That's when North Main Street and Depot Square backs up because we can't accept any more water. So we always have to be aware of that reality. Yes, ma'am, would you mind?
I'm coming right up. Is there going to be a later debate meeting that you're going to discuss all that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we don't have that, we don't have that analysis complete yet. So once that report is issued, it likely won't be a, you know, it's a pretty important issue. It likely wouldn't be a standard city council meeting because I suspect a lot of people might be interested in that. So that might be a meeting that we hold, for example, at the Opera House and have them present their findings there.
Oh, it will be discussed and everybody will be involved in that?
Yeah, of course. It's, it's going to be a process to come up with a plan.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
And I, and I do want to add that part of the, part of this plan is that each of these projects, we are committing to updating at a future council meeting. So everything that we're suggesting here, we're committing to providing regular updates on. There may be some that need bigger updates and more and broader conversation, but every single thing that we're putting into the main plan will be updated at a future council meeting.
Thank you. Any questions, counsel? Yes, sorry.
I, well, I don't have a question, but I get, I think part of, as I'm sitting here thinking about it and hearing people talk, I'm thinking about public education piece, and I really think it will be important for us to, I think we have had the advantage of sitting here and listening to the river scientists and having all of their modeling and lots of people have not. And so how do we get everybody on the same page to make sure that everyone understands, you know, okay, riverbed management can still be done, and this is where we would do it and why we would do it here? And that just because we've done it in the past, there are other things that have also changed, like the, you talked about upsizing, and I remember having a conversation with Danielle Ozarsky one day, and she said, you know, you can't upsize storm or your stormwater system to handle these hundred year floods. You wouldn't want to. And so, you know, you're, you're doing it for your, you have to create it. And so I, to handle your, you know, larger rainstorms, but you're never going to be able to have a system that's going to have the capacity. And to the mayor's point, where would it all go anyway? So how do we make sure, how do we educate everybody in the community to understand all of these different points that we're coming from and so that we all can kind of be on the same page? That's a really big challenge.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe we need to like write a graphic novel or something and then have Berry reads. I don't know, but I'm just saying, like, how do we get that information out?
Yeah, and that's part of why I wanted to make sure that we kept the continuing resident education thing, because if we keep doing these workshops and keep finding, that's going to basically guarantee that we keep finding opportunities for talking about all sorts of things. You know, we did them on rain gardens and rain barrels and stormwater property management this spring, but people are talking about all sorts of things for the fall. I've got someone from the Vermont Department of Health who wants to do a how to pack a go bag workshop with us. And we could certainly do, you know, all, all sorts of other, other things going forward. Like in my mind, like ideally, I would love to do like fall and spring, you know, get ready for winter, get ready for summer, and keep, keep on that cycle. We'll see what we can keep getting grant funded and, and keep having the staff capacity and like things like that to do, but I think that would be a great pattern, so.
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
I keep on, as what she said, I talked over 500 people, and they're all, and they're all saying the same thing, is that instead of upgrading, just to get rid of the riverbeds will unplug the drains that are in there. I was down there when you did, last year, the city did behind RK Miles, and as they took the first scoop, it all bubbled right up on the side where that drain is because it was plugged. You've got people down at the north end that are running their, their pumps in their cellars now every day instead of once or twice a year. That water's not gone down and it's not going to go down. And they're all saying the same thing, the water needs to be dredged. Not much updating as far as the storm system goes, but it's all plugged. That's what I was told by the people that I talked to.
Thank you.
And I agree.
Yes.
I have a possible project to add to your list. I think we should look into, or can we look into permeable parking lot mitigation in that Depot Square area and back there, because I think that, that doesn't go necessarily into the storm drain system, but it does, you know, collect water that then can be released slowly into the water table rather than dump into the river.
Yeah, and thank you for adding that. May I sort of counter suggest, I had been thinking about green infrastructure because I had asked last time we talked about the Tiff District, like, could that parking lot incorporate some better stormwater management and things like that? Would, what about a goal that sort of suggests we investigate and pursue as possible green infrastructure around new infrastructure projects to include things like permeable parking lots and, I can't believe I'm blanking on like other green spaces that the city creates as part of new development? Does that sound, okay?
Yes, yes, that would be good.
Peter Anthony.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to observe that many of these issues would normally be on an ongoing basis addressed, discussed, vetted by a conservation committee. The city of Berry, in my understanding, is rather exceptional in that there is no conservation committee in the city, and I take that as a historic representation of political opposition. But the whole discussion about the balance between public and private land that is then differentially administered either by private owners or by the city council, we do it on a, an ad hoc parcel by parcel basis like the cow pasture. I just would observe that some of what Counselor Guston has admirably overseen would normally be the fodder for a conservation effort in the city of Berry on an ongoing basis, not just to tend to flood recovery in a particular neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Dearing.
Just curious why we haven't been able to reach or have any communications with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers with some of the situations we're dealing with.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not sure I understand the question entirely. They're, they're deployed, they're deployed by the federal government. Is there, Counselor Dearing, could you expand? Is it a specific project or?
Well, they deal with a lot of these kinds of things throughout the country.
Yeah.
And as a federal agency, we were dealing with FEMA and some other things like that. So I just wasn't sure if that was an area of opportunity that we could take upon to explore with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to see if maybe they have a solution that we haven't been able to necessarily look at. They see these things on a nationwide basis. I was kind of doing a little bit of research over the last week or so with some of the stuff that they handle. It's usually more bigger things, bigger rivers, not necessarily manmade rivers like here in Berry. But it's something that we should, might be able to look at, and it's an area that we haven't looked at, that, you know, maybe we could and could get some information.
Yeah, they were, they were deployed by FEMA to investigate in this, a sign of how bad it was, the landslide above Pike Street. So they were, they were deployed in Berry for that and sort of gave some preliminary advice. But yeah, I don't know if this is within their scope. I'm certainly happy to ask. I think probably VEM would be a point of contact. But yeah, that's my only experience with them in the last three years was when they were sort of called in by FEMA when nobody really knew what to do on Pike Street.
Sure, and I only say that because I was looking at some of the dredging stuff. I've been really interested in some of the historical things, and they are ones that do a lot of dredging of rivers. So that's the only reason that I bring that up, is that maybe they have something that we haven't been able to touch on, and maybe somehow we just haven't been able to communicate with them somehow. I mean, I don't know, but I'm just trying to throw things at the wall to see what sticks with certain things, and I know this is an opportunity many communities utilize, and I haven't heard anything about us utilizing them, so I wanted to kind of make that known.
We can talk to Vermont Emergency Management. I mean, normally the projects that the city has done in the past, it's project specific where you actually apply to the Corps, and they decide, you know, they, they look at the applications that they have and decide whether they'll do, they have a scoring system, they decide whether they'll do the project, but it's a good thought. Amy Gelford.
Yeah, I had a couple of thoughts. One thing with the Army Corps of Engineers is they are involved with the three flood control dams on the Winuski River. So the Waterbury Dam, there's a massive project on that one that they're involved in, and it's in cooperation with Agency of Natural Resources. I'm not sure exactly what they're doing on the East Berry Dam, but maybe that's a subject for, you know, outreach to make sure the city knows what they're, they're working on there. A question for Ann Ar. I had a couple, couple of thoughts. And this is a concern I had expressed to Counselor Guston before. A little my bigger concern about all of this is we have a lot of education and outreach and planning going on, which is very important. We have applications for very large, expensive, big, important projects that are going to take years to come to fruition, and I'm worried about the middle, the smaller projects that would make a difference if we get a six inch rainstorm five weeks from now. Because it feels like, you know, and I'm on the higher elevation part of the north end, so it's not a direct threat to me, but you know, on a rainy day, the north end feels a lot like it did on some of the really bad rainy days. And on a dry day, it's a dust storm. It's really, even on a nice sunny day, it's unpleasant to be outside sometimes. So, you know, it used to be like a running joke, Amy's on city council, she's going to ask what you're going to do about the Berlin Street Bridge over and over again. And then all of a sudden it went to the extreme solution became the solution. And I know there's caveats about it, it hasn't been decided, but I went on the, the walk last week that the consultants did, and they told everybody the Berlin Street Bridge has to go. So that's the public outreach message they're putting out. It was mostly an audience of people who weren't from Berry, but that is what they're saying. So I'm a little worried about those in between projects because the problem with the Berlin Street Bridge is debris, and we're not talking about what are we doing about debris other than the work in Gunner's Brook. So the problem with the Berlin Street Bridge is not so much the water, it's the debris issue. So we're not talking about doing anything upstream of Blackwell or upstream of the Berlin Street Bridge to stop the debris before it gets jammed under the bridge. We're not talking about anything for the underside of the bridge to keep it from turning into the jackstraws that's there, that's never been thoroughly cleaned out. And I've crawled around on the banks for green update, pulling out bottles and trash and all of that. And the other thing that happens is, I have to say, as somebody who was in a master's in aquatic ecology, I'm amused by the strategic riverbed maintenance. These euphemisms are getting, getting very creative. There's, there's a lot of different things about exactly how to do dredging correctly so that it's not counterproductive, and there's a lot of arguments about that. But I don't think anybody wants trash in the rivers. So what are we doing to stop the debris in the first place? Because I have, you know, I have photos and the visual memory of the dumpsters bouncing up and down against the base of the Berlin Street Bridge from dumpsters falling in. And they sit there and they bounce, and periodically garbage bags fall out and those add to the debris dam and all of that. And it's like, how did we let a dumpster? And this isn't the first flood, this was either December or the next July, I don't remember which, like, how did we allow a dumpster to fall in the river again? So what can we do to just stop literally trash, large pieces of trash from getting in the river? Is there anything we can do about that now? I know it's mostly on private property, so I don't know if that's an ordinance or an education thing or a small money thing, like, hey, how do we anchor this down so it doesn't go in the river? I feel like there's some wins to be made there because let's say we don't get the millions of dollars to rip up the Berlin Street Bridge, what, or, you know, it's going to take five years to do, like, what are we doing for this summer? What are we doing for next summer? What are we doing for next winter for ice jams? So I just, I'd like to see some more debris control on that. The railroad trestle's gone, but it's not clear to me what's happening with the banks of it. I've been pretty clear, I'm not a fan of them putting in a new trestle to serve one business. I know the city kind of signed away, like, that you're not going to get in the way of new things happening to VTRMs, but certainly I, as a taxpayer for Vermont, I don't want my state tax dollars going into a bridge to one location for millions of dollars when a few blocks away, we have a railroad track that ought to be moved away from the river. And where is that? At Berlin Street. I, I think we need to seriously look at what's going to happen with RK Miles. Can that railroad bridge, can that railroad track be relocated? Because I don't know any business person, are they going to move into the RK Miles warehouse that constantly floods? And it's not going to potentially, it's going to be on a weird little stub and not have the cross traffic? I don't know. But I'm going to be lobbying for this, for VTRMs to not spend money fixing one railroad spur, but to fix the one that keeps getting damaged and flooded, and that also might open up the options for actually doing something with Berlin Street to make it look more like Blackwell and Granite Street in terms of the bridges. I'm also not hearing about, anything about rooftop and hard tops. I made that comment at the neighborhood walk thing, whatever it was, it felt like it was a PR event on Tuesday or Wednesday. I don't know if they were actually open to, to public input, but I pointed out, you know, you look at RK Miles, it's a giant rooftop that just flows straight onto Hard Pack into the river. What are we doing to slow down rooftop runoff? That is hopefully not million dollar projects, hopefully that's smaller scale stuff and that can be done in the shorter term. I don't think we're going to fix it with individual household rain barrels, but there's some things we can do with large scale storm runoff from rooftops and, and hard surfaces. So I'll stop there. Thanks.
Peter Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to respond to Counselor Dearing's invitation to engage the Army Corps of Engineers. I wanted to respond to Council Deering's invitation to engage the Army Corps of Engineers. The representative within, embedded within the Agency of Natural Resources, who is the chief liaison with the, with the Army Corps, his name is Ben Green, he is a Barry resident. He's heard from several people, including myself, that it would be nice, indeed more than nice, useful to the city of Barry, if when the Corps spends money on the East Barry Dam, they actually consider redesign so that the flow through the dam could be altered in emergency circumstances. He's had that theme or suggestion from several people, but all it takes is an invitation for Ben to come and talk about what the plan for the, the Corps is for the East Barry structure. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel, anything else? If not, we will move on. You were finished, right?
I, I am done. Well, no, I am done. I just, my final point is that what I will do is incorporate our conversations tonight, actually work to, to rewrite the sections of the plan, to present what it would look like to get a new plan out there. I am going to try my absolute best to get that done in the next five to seven days or so and get it out to council and the public, so that council and the public has plenty of time to actually see what a potential new plan would look like instead of these sort of like draft versions we've been working with, and so that people can continue to offer individual feedback back to me, or generally on that. So just, that's it.
Thank you. So Counsel, we'll move on to item F on the agenda. This is the update on FEMA buyouts. Mr. Starilla Castro.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go through the presentation that was included in the packet. So first of all, some, just the, the top-line information. The city received 67 buyout applications, 27 were approved by the city, 39 were not pursued, and we, these account for, all the approved applications would account for approximately 124,000, almost $125,000 in lost property value. And I apologize, I remember there's a mistake in the math, it's 40 not pursued, I apologize for that, realizing my simple math mistake there. The, there's 24, of the, of the 27 that were approved by the city to proceed, 24 of those have been approved by FEMA, right? So, so the process here is that both the property owner and the city have to agree to move forward, and then FEMA has to, of course, approve the, the applications that are submitted. And so 24 have gotten the green light from FEMA so far, including all five that are landslide-related buyouts. Right now, you know, many are undergoing appraisals, many have already received appraisals, some property owners have received offers from FEMA already, and they're, they're, you know, on a glide path to sort of getting this, this process over with. And then just as a, you know, just as a reminder, the reason we have those high number of not pursued buyout applications is of course because of the FEMA contingents, the FEMA requirement that, and a condition that any property that is purchased through a FEMA buyout may never be redeveloped. So because of that rule, the city pursued a, a rule of basically pursuing buyouts with the greatest mitigation value to the city as a whole, and we did that with the advice and of people who know the river the best. And, you know, we, we tended to focus on, on clusters along the river and, and places where we could store and catch water from damaging other properties. So I'm going to go through the next series of slides just to give you the visual and, and sort of where things stand across the city. This is a overhead map of the North End. You can see here outlined the properties that applied, and you can see only one green box, which is the FEMA-approved property 572 North Main Street, which is, many of you know, is a part of our, our project to fortify the Willie Street Bridge. So the idea here is to create some floodplain to catch water coming down this section of the river, protect homes, and protect the bridge, which is not only in access to that neighborhood, but are the only access to our wastewater treatment facility. There's a, you can see the, you know, the purple boxes here, these are FEMA applications that were not pursued. You know, we've, we've talked about this in the past, but essentially here, the, you know, with our plans to redevelop the North End, and because of the FEMA condition that anything that's purchased through a FEMA buyout may not be redeveloped, we just simply haven't approved any on the North End, because we don't know what site control we will or will not have. So as, as site control becomes available, some of these could potentially become future FEMA buyouts, but collectively, you know, a decision was made that these, these applications in that neighborhood would, would not be pursued until we had some opportunities for redeveloping the neighborhood and not losing the, the housing in that, in that part of the city. This is an overhead view of Vian Scampini, Vian Scampini Berlin Street area, and you can see here that a lot of approvals have, have moved forward. The Black Square was a property that did apply for buyout, the city did approve, and the property owner never submitted their application, so they're, they've missed that boat. However, you know, that, that's always a risk when you go through the buyout process. As you can see, because of the location of that property, it doesn't really materially impact our ability to build floodplain there. So if this was to happen, that was a, you know, a pretty good location for it to happen for the city's purposes. There's also a couple of properties on, across from the floodplain, then one on Test, at 10 West Second, where we also were told would be a good area to catch some water after that bend in the, in the river. There's one that, a property on this map that was not pursued, and again, that's, that's solely because it's not clustered, and, and basically, you know, our calculation was it would be really difficult to direct water to that property to catch it without damaging something in between. Certainly not an indication that these, you know, these property owners didn't sustain damage, it's just sort of, is there mitigation value to the city as a whole, and there just simply wasn't on that location. There's a, this is a little bit more complex, colorful map of the Gunner's Brook area, and so we had a couple colors here, and I'll go through. You can see that the easy ones are the green, you know, everything on Harrington Avenue besides the two properties on the corner, applied for FEMA buyout, all but one of them has been approved so far. Just for clarification, it looks like there's, you know, a gap between the buyouts and the river, those are already vacant properties, part of our floodplain. So that would be, you know, this is really extending that floodplain quite significantly. The property on the corner of Maple and Harrington, they applied for buyout, the city was willing to consider it and approved it, but that property was sold, and, and so that, that application was withdrawn. Again, if that were to happen, that was a pretty good place for it to happen, doesn't impact the city's, the city's plans for flood mitigation in the area as, as a whole. There is another larger property on Dick's Place that was pursued because it had, the, the size of the property and location of it was deemed to be valuable for catching additional water downstream after that pretty sharp turn in the, in the river. That application's still not approved by FEMA, but was submitted by the owner, so we're, we're just a matter of time, hopefully, on getting that one approved as well. You can see some red that wasn't, that wasn't pursued, and then the blue are intakes that came during the 24 flood, so sort of future opportunities for us to do some flood mitigation. I know the river scientists, when we walked this site with them, are certainly very compelled by the two properties on, on Brook Street towards the top as, as potential sites as well. And all these sites, I haven't mentioned it, but all these sites have the, the impacted, the impact of the taxes lost, although based on what we heard from Representative Wazak, though, we'll be, we'll get some of that back. So that's, you'll, you'll see what we'll, the grants we'll be getting from the state for this, these neighborhoods. This is River Granite Street area, and we have a really, this is, this is a really large parcel, the Duzrope Machines property extends all the way to the river, and so that's, that's a really important site for mitigation for that neighborhood. And then we also have some properties across the street, across, excuse me, across the river on River Street, with one of the, the yellow properties there, which has also not quite yet been approved by FEMA, but was approved by the city and by, and, and the, the property owner did submit their application as well. There's one property here that's removed from the river that was not considered by the city, and also a 2024 flood intake, which also very compelling because the, the lot right next to it, the parcel right next to it, is the River Street Playground, so could also become a, you know, a broader mitigation location as well in the future. This is just a citywide view, the, the landslides are sort of all over the place, and so this is just giving you a citywide view of these, they've all been approved by the city and FEMA, and they're, they're moving forward. They're probably, they, they were moving forward, the council made these decisions earlier on than the other buyouts, so these are a little bit ahead. I would expect that, that these will probably be among the first to close. I believe these have all gotten, yes, they've all gotten their appraisals, and so they, they should be closing hopefully fairly soon. This is just an overhead view of, of the not pursued. You can see there, you know, most of them are, you know, there, a lot of them clustered in the North End, as I mentioned, but there were some locations across the city that, that were not considered for, for buyouts for many reasons, primarily, the main reason being they weren't clusters along the river that had mitigation value to the city as a whole, but you can see sort of where, where they are. I, I think this is indicative of, you know, a lot that's come out in today's discussion of the floodresiliency plan, that, you know, people don't just have flooding issues along the river, right? There's, there's people in neighborhoods that, you know, they, the, the reason somebody may have submitted this application is because they get some water, runoff water. Again, no mitigation value to the city as a whole, but also an indication that there's flooding issues, that you don't need to be near the river to have a flooding problem. So that's, that's the update overall, you know, I think really good progress, and, you know, we've been really, as I mentioned before, I'll mention it again, VEM has been really great partners with us on this, they, we have an MOU with them to, to manage these, and we get involved with sort of the end of the process, but it's, it's, they've done a great job helping get these along. Most of these property owners are, like I said, the 24 of the 27 approved by the city have been approved by FEMA, so people are finally starting to get some, you know, conclusion to this really long and traumatic process, which is, which is good, and if we're lucky, if, if the homeowners are lucky, though, we'll be having some, some closings here fairly soon. So that's, that's the update.
Thank you. Questions? Question I had, so this, it's the city's responsibility, we'll have to arrange, have the contract, a contract to remove the structure. Do you have to tear it down, or can you just take it away?
Um, it.
You look at the cost of housing, obviously there are buildings that are damaged, but I also know very well the cost of housing, the cost of building, and I can assure you it would be, when you look at, it's possible to move homes. You could put a home back into service a heck of a lot faster renovating it, even if it's substantially damaged. So that's one question I have, is can we consider that when we get to that point to move homes rather than tear them down and throw them in a landfill?
Yeah, I, I'm certainly happy to ask that, Mayor. I, I agree with you that if, if that's an option and it's a possibility for, for a particular structure, that it's, would certainly be better than the alternative. I, to be candid, I don't know the answer to that, but I'm, I will certainly ask.
It doesn't move along really quickly, does it?
It does not, no, no. It's, and I, I remember when this started and talking to Janet, who's, you know, really shepherds these through for the city, you know, she said, you know, it'll be two years, and lo and behold, here we are, two years later, I mean, she's, she's been through a few of these.
And we haven't closed one.
And we haven't closed one yet.
And we have 24 to close.
Yeah, correct. So, yeah, but it's, it's a long process, a long process for the, you know, for the property owners, it's a really difficult process for them. You know, we went, things are happening more quickly now, but they, we went a, a good year and a half without any information to share for them, and that, that is really difficult, because it, you know, people don't know how, how and whether they can move on. And so now, at least for the 24 who do have word from FEMA, that's, that's something, and they can sort of see the light at the end of the tunnel. We're really confident that the other three will come through, it's just a matter of, they, they happen to be some of the ones that came later in the process, so it makes sense that they're, they're sort of, we don't have official word yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, folks? Okay, Counsel, we'll move on to 8G on the agenda. I'm not sure what exactly we call it. Counselor?
Well, I, I mostly just wanted to raise a couple of issues about the ordinance that I would like to have considered in the rewrite. And, and, you know, try to keep this quick, because it's late, people are tired.
It's okay.
But one of them is, I understand, I really do understand that people want to have a way, a mechanism to hold folks accountable. I'm going to get that. My concern, though, is that fines being imposed on people who don't have the resources to pay them won't function as a deterrent. And Byrne brought up the, the possibility of, I think she called it a point system, but, you know, some kind of way to leverage community service out of people who are misbehaving as a, a more, a more enforceable kind of, I've, I've worked with students, you know, teenagers enough to know that if you can't carry through on a threat, don't make it. And that's what, what, that's a little bit what the, you know, assessing fines on people who don't have resources feels like to me, and so maybe it, everybody can be assessed community service, and maybe we can define that as being, adding people, adding somebody to a, a public works crew to do unskilled storm drain cleaning with, or, you know, be a flagger for the, for some project that the city is doing anyway, so they're being supervised and really held to account, and it's not just a case of, you know, somebody says, well, I'm going to go and, you know, pick litter, and maybe they don't do it. So that was one thought. And the other thing, I, I really think we need to think about whether or not the delinquent prop, or the, the problem properties, what was the, what's the phrase? Nuisance properties. Thank you. Whether that will have a chilling effect, because you're making landlord, you know, you're making landlords responsible for other people's behavior, financially responsible for other people's behavior, and is that going to mean that landlords are going to be less willing to rent to people who are marginal, or who, or who have state, you know, state assistance, or who have large and ungovernable families, and things like that? I'm just, I'm just, I want that to be thought about, and maybe, maybe that, that particular part of the ordinance could just be taken out entirely and thought about it for, since it's not, it doesn't seem to be as immediate as the, you know, the whole, the holding the personal behavior to account.
Yeah, and those are, and those are both good questions. On a four-to-three vote, Counsel moved the ordinance as presented to a second reading. It's my obligation as Chair of the Council to do the will of the Counsel, which on a four-to-three vote was moving the ordinance as presented to a second hearing. So we can talk about all of those things at the second hearing. Might be a very long meeting, but a lot of important meetings are, it's okay. But, but that would be the appropriate time to bring forward your concerns, or you can certainly express them to the Counsel. You've presented an alternative plan, we've heard from the manager relatives of that plan. You know, I didn't look at your plan as sort of an either-or. I looked at it and said, maybe both.
I'm, I'm not suggesting that it is an either-or, which is why I'm not bringing that up tonight, because I did have assurance from Nicholas that the time to talk about that was. that the time to talk about that was.
Like I said, my first reaction is, huh, well, maybe we could do both. Because maybe one would have, maybe one might have an effect, a positive effect on the other. But I think the appropriate time to have these discussions, even though admittedly, it makes for a long meeting. And if there are substantive changes, we'll be back to a first hearing. If that's what counsel wants, if that's what the majority of the counsel wants to do, would be on the 17th.
All right. I appreciate the time to explain.
Not at all. So counsel, upcoming business. I purposely tried not to introduce a whole lot because things are going to start happening very quickly with CDBG DR funds in terms of applications. You know, we have been, I was on the phone today with the Secretary of the Agency of Commerce and Community Development, trying to secure some assistance for the city because we're going to have a lot of grants and things to apply for. So purposely, I've tried not to introduce a lot of subjects because I'm waiting for this stuff to start popping. And when it does, we're going to be very busy. And I suspect we'll be moving to some sort of weekly meeting schedule because we're going to be, you know, we've got to start having the conversations about housing. We've got to start having, Council Augustine wants to have a going-away party for the trestle. And I'm all over that idea, but only if we couple it with a, I don't care who wants to come. I mean, we're all renters. I mean, I don't care if you own your home, you're a renter. We're only here for a limited amount of time. And this municipality has been around for 200 years. So, you know, we're the short timers. So I always look at every discussion, even though some people say, well, okay, so you're going to have a discussion with the North End neighborhood. No, I'm going to have a discussion with the whole city because it's everyone's city. So I told Council Augustine, I'll even supply, I'll supply the M80s for the little popsicle stick trestle that you want to blow up. I don't have a problem with that. But we've got to have, start the conversation about the North End and what that looks like. Because we are going to have an opportunity before December 31st to do something big in the North End, to do something meaningful, and most importantly, to kick off that North End master plan. So it's going to be, going forward, we're going to be hearing a lot about housing and opportunities. But if anyone else has anything, happy to consider or put it on the agenda.
I will just say, obviously, we're going to finish up this round of changes to the flood plan next week. But going forward, we have some new counselors. The offer I will always make when we do a flood update is if there's any part of the plan that you would like to see updated sooner than it is currently scheduled or would like an update on, please let me know. I work closely with the city manager to make sure that, if the update involves city staff, that everything is ready for that. But if there's any piece of this that you would like to see on the forward schedule, please reach out to me directly.
Anyone else? Okay. Counsel Deering, what do you got for us?
I got nothing today, believe it or not.
I just have a couple of quick announcements for people who might be gardeners. And one of them is that the Church of the Good Shepherd, which does a lot of work in the city for good causes, does a plant sale, which is, it's a pay what you can. It's by donation only. And we had it over the weekend at the church, but it migrates to 90 Orange Street, which is Marjorie Strong's porch. And you can go by and find all kinds of interesting things, perennials, annuals, vegetables. And your money supports Good Shepherd. And the other thing is, there is, somebody from Front Porch Forum has started a sort of neighborhood garden and produce-sharing email list. And if you'd like to be included or if you know someone who would like to be included on that, please get in touch with me, and I will see that you get added to that email list. Right now, people are doing things like trading tomato varieties starts. And we're hoping that when people have extra, when your bumper crop of zucchini comes in, that you'll be able to find somebody who wants to make zucchini bread with some of it. So if you want to be involved in those things, let me know.
Thank you. Counsel.
Well, as a person who believes I can never have too much zucchini, that sounds good to me. Genuinely love it. That's never happened to me, and I'm seriously disappointed. Happy Pride. I'm looking forward to Saturday. It's going to be a really, really, really good weekend in Berry City, and I am looking forward to it.
Thank you. Counsel Bruggeron.
Yes.
Counsel Spombler.
I'm also looking forward to Pride. I would invite everyone to come down and buy something from the bake sale or just be in the city park. There's going to be a Pride ride as well. It's always a lot of fun. And I did have an opportunity to join the River Walk the other day, and I thought it was really great. I was impressed with that there were as many people there. There were so many people there. And we got to hear from people that I've never met. And apparently, I was related to one. So it was a really cool experience, and I was glad that I was able to participate in it. And the next one has been rescheduled because of weather.
Yes, June 15.
June 15, thank you. So, yeah, it was great.
Counsel Ruth here.
Just want to say thank you to the city manager and you, Mayor, and Brian Baker. Had a constituent had an issue, sent me an email. I went and looked at it. Got ahold of you people, you were on it. And just, I want them, it shows the public that we are listening to them. And I just want to thank you for getting on it.
You're welcome. It's what we do. Because if we don't, we get yelled at.
Can I take one more thing? I wrote an email to Nicholas to ask him about Clifton Street. And the potholes have been fixed. And the constituent that bothered me, my husband, said, look, it's been fixed. And so, thank you, I appreciate that. I don't have that constituent nagging me anymore. It's not about that.
Look, potholes have just been brutal. Even personally speaking, we are spending thousands of dollars fixing potholes in parking lots.
I'm seeing it last couple.
It's crazy. I don't know if it's just how much water the ground has to absorb. That's one big question I'm going to have, by the way, about, I'm well aware of the pavement treatment that absorbs water into the ground. The big question I have is how does that affect Freestaw? Because we're in Vermont, we're not Florida. But changing the subject a bit, Memorial Day. Every time I represent the city at the Memorial Day ceremony in City Hall Park, I'm just so humbled. And by just the support that veterans here in Berry have, you know, the folks who are participating in the junior ROTC program, just great kids, working hard. So really, it was an honor to be there on Friday. I'm also looking forward to Saturday for a couple of reasons. I'll be at, I'm sure I'll wander down to the Pride event. Karen and I will at one time or another, but not Saturday evening because on Saturday evening, I promised her that we're going to watch the Tony Awards because Karen produced a show on Broadway. And Sam Biandolillo, who's also a Berry native, is one of the producers as well. And they've been nominated for a Tony Award. So what I figured out today, when I looked at the, because there's like 20 producers. So producers is a fancy Broadway way of saying investors. But when I looked at it, I realized that Berry, Vermont has the highest per capita of Tony nominees in the country. Well, we only have 8,000 people, and two people from Berry are nominated for a Tony. So how is that for numbers and kind of neat? So with that, counsel, did you see the executive session memo from the, do you think we really need one? Because I don't. I mean, the process was advertised. I think we all agree with the selection. I can't imagine that anybody wouldn't. So I don't think we need an executive session on that. Unless, if anybody has any questions, happy to go into executive session, but.
Got a question?
Yes.
You need a vote on that?
No. No, it'll come to us on the 17th. But Nicholas, as a courtesy, was just saying, look, if you have questions about my process or why I made the decision I did, I looked at the decision and said, nope, I would have done the same thing. So with that, we don't need an executive session. Yea, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
All those in favor? And those opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.